So I'll entertain any questions anybody has.
Are there any questions for Bill?
I have a question. Uh, thank you very much, Bill, for that report. So those work sessions, I've really been looking forward to them. And so just to confirm, there are no, there is no way that you can participate remotely in those sessions. Is that accurate?
I can't say for sure that it's accurate. I'm not part of who decides uh what is done virtually and what is not done virtually. So I, I really don't know. I think you'd have, you'd have to call into the office and talk with, with staff about that. Because uh it's just not a decision that, that the authority has been asked to make.
Right, I um, what, really the authority? Okay, that's interesting. So I guess what I would like to express then, uh, so right now I have a fever of one hundred and two degrees. So hopefully that's all going to clear up by the time the work sessions roll around. But I'm very personally conflicted about if there are no virtual options, whether I should attend or not. It's outside, I'll be masked, but clearly I'm sick. Yet these things matter a lot to me. And I just, um, I guess I would ask that you would ask the authority or the staff from an authority position to please provide a way for not only other cog elected officials to participate, but also our residents to participate in a way that they can guarantee is safe for them and others. It's just, it, it's, it just really is, um, it's just very important to make sure that people can participate during this time of pandemic and do so safely.
I'll, I'll certainly send an email to the director, uh, either this evening or first thing in the morning, reflecting your request, uh, and we'll go from there.
Thank you very much, Bill. I appreciate that.
Anything else, uh, any questions for Bill? Seeing none. Thank you, Bill. We appreciate you giving us the update. And uh we'll move. Next is under unfinished business, a review of the draft workforce housing ordinance amendment. I don't know, are you doing that, Dave, or start with Jenna or you?
Just to kick it over to Jenna Wargo, the planning director.
Thanks, Dave. So the workforce housing ordinance is codified under supplemental regulations of chapter twenty seven zoning. It currently applies to all zoning districts where the provision of workforce housing is required or incentivized. So township requires a contingent of workforce housing to be built in the traditional town development zoning district. And it is incentivized within the Terrace Streetscape District. The original ordinance was adopted in twenty fifteen and achieves very specific purpose of establishing a legacy workforce housing program for deed restricted owner occupied units. Provided with the agenda is the draft amendment to the workforce housing ordinance. This ordinance would be applicable to the development or rehabilitation of ten or more residential dwelling units. Conversion of an existing residential structure to a multifamily dwelling that results in ten or more residential dwelling units. Conversion of a non-residential property to residential property that results in ten or more residential units. Seeing a theme here, hopefully. And then any, this would be within the TTD and Terrace Streetscape zoning districts. So it expands upon the legacy workforce housing program by allowing for rentals or owner occupied units and provides for workforce units to be built offsite, designated offsite, land donation, land and building donation, and fee in lieu. So I don't know how, if there are questions the board would like to ask now of staff while we're here. This is just the first rough draft. We will be looking for this to be referred to Planning Commission with the hopes of a future joint Planning Commission and Board meeting to discuss this topic. We have provided this draft to parties involved in land use appeals for the Pine Hall development. I'm sure they will be providing comments on this as well. The new ordinance will strive to improve upon the current form, provide for more affordable housing opportunities, and assist township in meeting the needs of residents of all incomes.
Okay, thank you. I guess uh, the action recommended tonight is that we refer this to the Planning Commission, which generally is where a lot of the things get fleshed out. But if there are any specific questions anyone has or anything in particular that you see that should be changed before we even start talking, this will be a time to discuss those things. Uh, and then we'll send it to the Planning Commission. And I'm sure it will change quite a bit by the time we get to a final uh ordinance that we'll be voting on, so.
Staff would like to know if there's just no go option for the Board of Supervisors so we can completely take it off the table and not even provide that, whatever it may be, to the Planning Commission.
Patty?
Um, I just had a question. So I was reading sort of what was written there, and it's just a procedural question. One of the things said that, um, that the, I guess you would be the administrator or whatever, but um, providing a policy and procedure manual. How would we track that to, like, do they sign? Something verifying that they got the policy and procedure manual?
So typically with these types of ordinances, municipalities will create these documents and provide them to applicants that are going through this process. So that would be part of the pre-development meeting with planning and zoning staff. Usually by that point in time, we would know what they want to build, if it's going to be ten or more units, and whether this ordinance would be triggered as a result.
Okay, but they don't sign something to say that in fact they got the policy and procedure manual?
They can.
I was just, I was just curious. I just didn't know if someone would say, well, we never got the manual. But, all right, um, then my other comment was just when you were talking about the inability to rent or sell a place. In that one section, it referred to um, the borough as opposed to us being a township.
Yep.
Like a
Make that correction.
Sorry?
Yes, that's a good observation. We'll make that correction.
Okay.
That language came from the State College Borough Ordinance, so it might have just been transpup inaccurate.
Yeah, that's, I just, I just saw that and thought, yep. That was it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments at this point?
Yeah, so I, uh, but it's, my comment was that, uh, in, in doing this, or maybe perhaps when you did the previous version of this in the borough, uh, you possibly have some data or benchmarking and compare, uh, comparisons, you know, have you or will that be done by the Planning Commission? So I wanted to find out how this compares with what's I, out there, other similar townships or other people are doing and figure out how good or bad this is because I don't have the expertise to do that, so.
That's a good question. I don't, I believe that staff at the borough, we would have provided I think twice a year, we would give an update on the affordable housing programs, the amount of money spent and put towards first time home buyers, et cetera. The borough has the most extensive affordable housing ordinance in our region. We can look at other areas and compare to see what they have.
I can, I can add a little bit to Jenna's response. So Mr. Mitr, answer your question. The, the first generation of this ordinance, which was enacted approximately five years ago, we did a pretty deep dive, uh, working with the Center County Housing and Land Trust, not just, uh, taking a review, doing a, conducting review of other regional and, uh, ordinances and other ordinances that you'll see throughout the Commonwealth, but you know, kind of taking a nationwide approach. And you'll find, uh, that communities across the country do these things, implement these ordinances and manage these programs in very different ways. Some of them, like ours, take a sort of a command and control approach, which is a deed restricted unit that remains in and a workforce housing inventory for a period of, of years, maybe ninety nine years, which just kind of seems to be the standard contract language. And mandates that that particular dwelling unit will be affordable to a certain range of income. And in our case, we're going from sixty to one hundred and twenty percent area median income based on the latest census data. So that's one approach. Other, other approaches look to be less, um, you know, mandated and, and more maybe working in partnership or, you know, they have a broader, uh, interest, but those communities typically have a housing stock and a, and a core population that can support that kind of initiative. And what we were looking at back in two thousand and fifteen was, you know, a, a need to get the program in place that would obligate these units to remain affordable for a period of time. So the legacy program, which we often referred to it uh, as was really the primary goal back in twenty fifteen, but certainly not uncommon to see similar language, nothing unique by any standard to Ferguson Township. Some of these other provisions that you're seeing staff add on into this draft were things that were commonly referenced in similar programs around the country and other ordinances. But, um, because of where the board's interests were five years ago, we didn't want to enact, they didn't want to enact them with that, uh, with, with that pass at it, with that first program. So things like fee in lieu of workforce housing, offsite workforce housing development. You know, relief from the requirement if the property can't be sold in a certain period of time. Those are, those were, um, those are provisions that are, you know, sort of germane in these ordinances throughout the country, but were purposefully excluded from what was enacted back in twenty fifteen and, and staff and the planning commissions and, and the board are going to be asked to review. You know, kind of bringing some of those mechanisms back in. But the Center County Housing and Land Trusts, uh, and their director, you know, at the time it was Rachel Fawcett, now it's Missy Schoonover. They both have a, you know, wealth of knowledge about how these programs have been implemented across the country, and we've sort of incorporated that language. Um, and also, you know, kind of working, um, uh, parallel to this, I forwarded, uh, the draft ordinance to Mark McMaster, who used to be the Chair of the Planning Commission, is also a Realtor in the area of RE/MAX to get the perspective from the Realtor community, because they have some good insight that they could bring to the table, market data, what works, what doesn't work, and their other experience. So prior to having this back in front of the board for authorization for advertisement for public hearing, I hope to have comments from that, uh, group of stakeholders as well. It's a long, good answer, but I
No, but thank you, because that sort of answers partially mine, or maybe fully, and you can just say it does. My second question, which was that, uh, the board passed in April two thousand and sixteen. I did a quick search on while preparing for this meeting. And if it was April two thousand and sixteen, I believe, when you, uh, when the board passed this, uh, ordinance. And so what you're saying is these other options, which is the fee in lieu and so on. So that's what's new in this version. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, much of, uh, the alternatives to onsite workforce housing dwelling units being constructed, the, whether it be the fee in lieu or the offsite development, or you know, the rental language in there, other kinds of mechanisms for probably not appropriate to call it relief, because they're still obligated in some other form, but at least for, you know, alternatives to what the, um, you know, in the case of the traditional town development zoning district, the ten percent onsite development requirement. Those are things that are largely the focus of this proposed amendment, because if you recall, when, when the board discussed this back in March and directed staff to proceed with, uh, an amendment, there was a realization, uh, by you all as, as a board that what we've done in the last four years has been generally ineffective. We still don't have any units that are in the inventory. So to take a step back and reassess the ordinance and reexamine the program in a way that might be conducive to more, you know, to a better product and, and more results. You know, that's, that's the, the main goal of this exercise here and, and preparing this draft. But I think that is a fair statement to say that's the, those are the main, um, provisions that are included in this amendment with some other things that Jenna touched on in her introduction.
Thank you.
Uh, Lisa, did you have a question?
Thanks. I wanted to ask, uh, for the distribution or the diversity of the types of units, whether owned or rented, and the size, um, I think currently it has to be the same distribution by size if, uh, let's see, um, with, uh, within the development. So if then this housing is built offsite, how would the diversity of the units be determined? Would it still be a distribution of the same types of units that are onsite? I couldn't find that.
Yeah, ideally that would be the result of this. It would take, that option would take a little more legwork from staff. The there's a part in this section that if it were to be built offsite or designated offsite, has to be accepted by staff as a equivalent affordable unit compared to what's being built in the development. So if a applicant designates a ten unit, two bedroom, per unit, offsite, and then in return, they build five bedroom units, uh, ten of them, that's not equivalent at all. So ideally, we would like to have the same units for whatever is provided offsite to be onsite as well.
Okay.
No double.
What's that?
No double dipping.
And then, um, I wanted to see if there's a copy of the new proposed ordinance that has the edit. So the red line edited copy from the original.
Yeah, we can get that too.
Great, thank you. That was it.
Any other questions? Laura?
Thank you. Um, to follow up on one of Lisa's questions, Jenna, you said that, that it would be up to staff to determine if it was an equivalent kind of a trade off. Would there be any board involvement in that determination?
I'd be looking for direction from you on that. Really, I mean, it could be at the staff level. It would be in, um, that would be coordinated with, uh, land trust on that. They are designated. For this, but really what we have, the basics of it are equivalent units in Ferguson Township within the growth area boundary, so.
So, and, and the way it would be proposed, um, to answer your question maybe a little more directly, as a zoning ordinance provision, if, uh, it were the zoning administrators' determination that the proposed offsite developments were not of like kind and quality to what would otherwise be required onsite. You know, that would be, that would be a zoning determination that would be subject to appeal. That appeal go in front of the zoning hearing board where, you know, the applicant in this case would be, um, you know, trying to, to make the case that, or make the argument that, uh, the offsite development proposed was indeed of comparable quality and should have been accepted. So I think there'd be an avenue for appeal, but under what's proposed, wouldn't go in front of the Board of Supervisors.
Gotcha, thanks. And then I have, um, I guess, one comment and then one place where I feel like Jenna, you wanted to know what's like an absolute stopping point. At this point, for me, um, page ten, number ten, I think it is. Yes, page ten, number ten, inability to rent or sell affordable housing units to qualified households. I am going to call that relief, Dave, because I do think it's relief, or we wouldn't be putting it in there. Um, it's something that really the developer will take advantage of. What I, I'm fine with that relief, but what I'm not fine with is the timeline. I feel like one year is far too short. I personally would like to see five years, but I know that would make folks scream or heads explode. So I'd split the difference at three. But I wondered what other board members thought about that. And the reason I'm putting that forward is because, um, you know, the alternative is then that Ferguson Township is the ones that are going to be marketing that, that house, that, that place to live. And there's a lot of cost involved with that marketing, cost and time. So while I'm very positively open to the relief, I'm really not open to that short time, timeline. So I wondered the board's opinion on that. And then, um, the other thing, um, is a question. So I know in land development, the township is, um, we can't, we can't necessarily dictate what happens in land development, only a small portion of that. And what I'm wondering is, we typically see, like in a current situation, that the affordable housing units are pushed out, pushed out to the end of the land development process. And my question is, can we insist as a township that it be not just put into phase four? Can we, at the time of passing, require that it be in pay, phase one? Or is there a prohibition from us doing that?
Yes, you can do that. Um, and, and in fact, that's sort of the, the process, at least under the TTD, is that those units are supposed to be spread out throughout the phasing of the development. And if you look at the, the Pine Hall TTD, there are, um, earlier phases or subphases, I guess, maybe more appropriately, that identify workforce housing units to be built. I think, you know, one of the things that we've learned, uh, as a, you know, as a township, trying to get this program off the ground, has probably been just that lesson, I think, that you, you just described, Mr. Nanny, which is that we got to be more, um, you know, uh, more insistent at the onset or the, the submission of these preliminary land development plans or general master plan, in the case of the TTD, that, that workforce housing contingent take place in earlier phases of the development.
So, but what I'm asking is, it gets a little bit more aggressive, like, can we insist that? So if a land development plan came to us and it wasn't phased in a way that we liked in terms of the affordable housing, can we not pass it because of that? Or do we have to have something in our ordinance? Thank you, Charles. Um, do we have to have something in our ordinance that says that, or can we not put something in our ordinance at all? So option A, no, Charles says. Option B? So can, can we put something in our ordinance that states maybe that we're not going to insist on that, but that if we feel that, that we have the right to not pass the land development plan based on that factor? Can we, can we do that? Well, can we get a
What, what options are available? I think the question, if I can restate it maybe in the hypothetical, is what mechanisms are available to the board to require workforce in phase developments to require that these units be built in throughout all phases of the development and not just in the later phases?
That's the question. What mechanisms?
Yeah, we can, we can certainly do some research on that and be able to report back.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And then back to my, my first question, how do others on the board feel about that one year timeline? Would you prefer to see something longer or?
Uh, I think that's probably something we'll work on as this goes through. I, I would, you know, I, I think I'd want to get some feedback from, uh, real estate. You know, as, as, you know, in terms of the implications of it, but uh, I don't have a problem with it. But I think, I guess, the sort of thing we'll be doing as we go through is figuring those things out. And I'm sure we'll have plenty of chance to raise that.
Okay, that's fine. Just as long as, since it's going to the Planning Commission, maybe they know that that's an area that we're kind of skeptical about, like, we think maybe it's too short, and can we push it? Maybe is the question?
We could certainly, uh, note that in, in the comments, uh, to the Planning Commission. I think earlier generations of this proposed amendment included a requirement that the applicant appear in front of the Board of Supervisors and essentially make the case for withdrawal from the, the program. I think we had some concerns about the enforcement of that. But, you know, one potential, because this is going to be, uh, work that's done with the Center, how does Center County Housing and Land Trust or the Township's Administrator, whomever that may be. And so, you know, they would be assisting in the marketing and, and the sale of these units. So I think we would certainly have their, you know, testimony, or we would have their opinion on whether, uh, the applicant made a good faith effort to try to sell those units in that first year. I mean, it certainly doesn't benefit any developer to sit on a unit for, you know, a period of time, a year, three years, whatever it might be, in the hopes that they'll be able to withdraw it from that program and sell it at a market rate. So I, I think we can bring that forward as a, as a concern. Get the input from the Planning Commission and the real estate community. And
Thanks.
What options are, are available to us?
Great, thank you. That's it for me. Thanks.
Sure. Anything else from board members? Lisa?
I'm just to clarify my understanding on that portion of it. So if the unit didn't sell within the year, then either the township or its designee could purchase the units. And then if they chose not to, then the developer would need to or could pay the fee in lieu. And then they would be, um, released from, from the, okay, so they would still be required to do something. Okay. Um, and then I guess in that, in asking, um, questions and, uh, sending this information to the Planning Commission, it'd probably be helpful to ask the Housing and Land Trust, their length of time that they see, um, other workforce homes on the market. How, like, what's their waiting list versus what are homes of a certain value? Listed for timewise. I'm not sure looking at the regular sale market would help that much, because it'd be a totally different category with clientele.
Sandra?
Yeah, another, uh, so brief comment, and since we are making our concerns heard, uh, one of my concerns would be if we are, and I, maybe I don't understand this precisely, but if we are allowing sort of like for like substitution somewhere else. One of my concerns is, I will read it carefully and think about it, but one of the concerns is gentrification. So which means that are we within the township pushing all the workforce housing units in one place at a much cheaper cost or wherever the land is cheaper and then, uh, uh, saying that, well, this is like for like, and that is something that I would like to avoid.
So I think we can pass that concern to the Planning Commission also. I had a question for Jenna. Was your question originally, uh, do we want to give the Planning Commission an option of just saying, we're not interested in, we don't think you should pursue this at all? Or is that, was that your question or?
Just portions of this. So if the board reviewed this tonight and it was decided fee in lieu is not an option, you're not entertaining that at all. I would completely take that off the table for Planning Commission, so we don't waste our time discussing it.
Discussing it.
Oh, okay, I see. I, I wasn't sure exactly what it was you're asking. Okay, so yeah, and I haven't heard anybody raise any question about any section of it that we wouldn't want to consider then. I guess if anyone has anything that I, I think it's all worth, uh, the discussion at this point.
Yep, yeah, I agree.
Agreed.
Uh, and I know we have several people who are here who, because they're interested in this topic. So if anyone wanted to make any comments, uh, you know, just wave or a little hand thing or something to let us know. Or take any comment.
I'll go.
Well, sure.
Good evening. Uh, thanks for having me on, uh, your, your Zoom meeting. I look forward to working with, uh, the Planning Commission staff as you go through this new, uh, draft ordinance. Um, I did get a copy of it. Uh, we have some comments that we're going to be providing to, uh, Betsy and Joe, as well as staff. As what we see is going to help and make it more expansive. I would just want to remind the board that, um, we're not starting from scratch completely with workforce housing. We did have the prior ordinance. And we have a couple of developments which are approved underneath that prior ordinance. So, uh, my goal when I'm providing comments on here is to, uh, make sure I'm incorporating the enhancements that you're looking at, the extra flexibility you're looking at, while still, um, protecting what approvals were while still protecting what approvals were previously given for the workforce housing program. To try to meld those two. We, I think we have a really good draft here. It's starting out. We have a lot of options. So I look forward to working with you guys on that. I think it's going to take a couple of planning commission meetings, but I think, you know, if we work through this, it should, should get a good product in the end.
Yes. Anyone else have any comments or questions? I, I guess my comment is just, I think this is good because I, I think we've sort of eased our way into workforce housing, starting with the original traditional town ordinance where we had no clue what it was we were recommending. And we're getting to the point where we have something that I think is really becoming a a useful tool for developing housing here. So I'm looking forward to discussions. Is there a motion to forward this to the planning commission?
I, Laura, move that we forward the affordable housing amendments to the planning commission.
This is weak. So I'll second.
Okay, the motion and a second. Any further comments?
Before a vote is taken, Jenna alluded to this briefly, but I just want to confirm that the board is, is supportive of scheduling a joint work session to discuss this with the planning commission. I think from staff perspective, we think it might help to streamline things a bit and, and give everyone an opportunity to have their voices heard in a unified, in a joint format. Okay?
Yes, very good idea.
Okay, we'll, we'll work on getting some dates around for that too.
Okay, great. So all in favor forwarding it? Let's signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is a review of the draft sign ordinance amendment. I think we're tossing it back to Jenna again.
Yeah, you're, you're going to be sick of me by the end of tonight. The planning department has drafted an ordinance amendment to update chapter 19 signs and billboards. The intent of this chapter is to encourage the effective use of signs as a means of communication in the township to maintain and enhance the aesthetic environment and the township's ability to attract sources of economic development and growth. And many other things that we've updated with this draft. So last update to this ordinance was in 2017. Planning commission has reviewed the draft during their May 11th and July 13th regular meetings, providing comments at both. The draft that is in front of you tonight reflects those comments from planning commission. And there's a memorandum dated July 15th from myself that summarizes the discussion by the planning commission during those meetings. And staff is just looking for the board to authorize advertisement for a public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments on the draft ordinance at this point?
Yes, Steve, it's Laura. I, I have a few. So I'm glad Jeremy and Bill are still here. I wanted some clarification on something. I thought that, I have lost the page, but in the exempt signs, the athletic field signs, my recollection was the change was to add only internal, not external. And I thought that that had emerged from a conversation about, you know, passing cars and not seeing the signs and not having a sign permit for them as opposed to, you know, it just being advertisement for the athletic facility. Jeremy and Bill, do you remember that? I'll make a change. If it's not just a typo, I'll propose a change.
I don't have, this is Bill. I don't have my copy in front of me and I'm, and I don't have the ability to get a copy. So I'm trying to go on the basis of the information you've just said, Laura, and it's not clicking with me. So I, I, at the moment, I can't be of any help to you.
Okay, that's not a problem. I'm trying to find it right here. See, I'll look.
Yeah, maybe, maybe it was to clarify whether it was for internal and external. And then we updated it to say internal and external.
Okay, then I'm going to, I think I'm going to propose a change then if it wasn't just a typo because I'm fine with the internal signs that are sponsored shine, signs being exempt. But I think external signs are just like a wall sign or something like that. And I'm not okay with them being exempt. So I'd like to propose that we remove external number 17 on page 18, found my place. So it'd be just, right now it reads, signs erected on the internal and external perimeter of an organizational sponsored athletic field sign shall be one-sided. I propose we remove and external. I make.
I may have addressed this at the meeting, but internal would make sense, but depending on the placement of this facility, where it could be to like a roadway. Those internal signs don't look quite as internal if you could see them from the road as you're driving by.
So I'm not sure what you're saying, Jeremy. Are you saying that you think they should both, the internal and external should be there or?
The, the item number 17 says they should be one, be one-sided. So if we change, say the external sides could be two-sided.
No, it's like, here's a fence and here's the inside that faces the ballplayers. And here's the outside that faces the road. The intent is that the internal signs are exempt and not the external because the external are like, kind of like free advertising, similarly to how we don't allow cars and trucks with painted signs to be parked for advertising. I don't know. I just think it's a fairness issue. So I'm, I'm, I'm not sure if I'm getting a second or not, but I'll move on if I'm not. Okay.
No, I agree with what you're saying, Laura.
Okay.
I, I guess I'm still not clear what the change is or what.
Yeah, I'm not sure how to explain it. I'm not even hardly at ballfields. But like, if you sit inside a ballfield and you look at the fence, there's a sign that says like Shaner hotels or something like that. I don't know. If you go outside the ballpark, that you can still see the fence. And the way this is written, you can put a sign on the outside of the fence facing outside, like toward the road and the parking lot and the other businesses as opposed to inside the stadium.
Laura, this is Bill Keo at this point again. And, and some of our discussion is, is coming back to me now. And, well, we might talk about the outfield fence and your concern. Many times with fields, and again, especially when you're talking about ball playing fields, there are fences up both foul lines as well. And, and it would not be unusual to have a sign facing the fans on the outside of the left field and right field sign, but on the inside of the outfield fence facing.
Sure, sure. I get what you're saying, but the way this is written, it talks about the perimeter. So those internal fences, you can, you can put as many signs on as you want, as far as I'm concerned. This is the perimeter.
And I believe that was one of the areas that.
Any of those signs outside of that facility?
Eeny, meeny, miny, moe. Who's going next?
So I think the draft that the planning commission reviewed Monday night, it didn't specify whether it was internal or external signs that were exempt. It just said athletic field scoreboard signs or something like that. It wasn't specific on, is it signs facing the players? Or is it the signs facing out? And that's what we were trying to specify that night.
Right. I, it's not, it's not a huge deal. I just, um, I don't know. I think probably the internal perimeter, it's appropriate and the external, it's not. But again, I'm probably willing to move on.
Laura, this is Bill Keo again.
Yeah.
If one were to interpret the word external as being a sign that would be noticeably visible from outside the park itself, that's clearly external. We're talking, we're talking about external to the ball field or external to the soccer field where we have fence, but internal to the park. So I think, I think the reference to external is, is still within the park area, but external to the facility itself in terms of the ball field or the soccer field. Because we're going to have fences around those. And clearly, there would be the opportunity for sponsorship facing the fans.
Fair enough. That's fine. Sure. I'll withdraw my motion.
What we're talking about, so.
Well, how are you going to vote, Steve? No, I'm just kidding. I still withdraw my motion. I have a question about how you interpret this, Jenna. Same page, page 18, number 13. It's about farm signs. Oh, yes. Including century farm signs, farm preservation signs. Each farm may have a total of three signs, farm name, century, and preserved. I'm confused because at the top of this section, see if I can scroll here. And I can't. At the top of this section, it states that these exempt signs won't count. I'm sorry. Or maybe I've lost my place. Does it somewhere say the exempt signs don't count in terms of number of signs allowed on the property? I guess I'm just confused. Like, do farm properties, are they allowed more than those three signs? Because I actually was wondering if sometimes farms have fronts on two roads. And they'll have on one road, like their century sign, their farm name, and then like the preservation sign. But then on the other road, they can't, from what I understood, cannot have any signs because three is their max. So is that, was that a misunderstanding of mine? Because I'd like them to be able to have identifying signs on each road frontage.
It's my opinion, I'm not the zoning officer, but exempt wouldn't count towards your sign allotted for your lot, in my opinion.
Could, maybe could we propose that? There could be, I, I just am concerned that I don't know enough amount about it to make a proper change and allow for this. If I don't maybe do it this way, can we allow for more than three exempt signs on the farm? And they could have two farm name signs? And that way it could account for those two roadways?
We can update something along those lines to make sure that's addressed.
That would be great. Thank you.
One possibility I think would be, I mean, I think that makes sense if you would allow the signs on both, you know, a farm is on two roads.
Right.
They could apply to both roads or something like that. I mean, I, I certainly have no problem with more than one century farm sign.
Right. Yeah, it seems like it would be helpful to designate those properties sometimes. Should I make a motion for that? Steve?
I don't know. Do, do you think we need a motion, David? Is this at the form now where we could just make, make it by a nod of the head?
Yeah, I think just consensus is fine. We'll work the language in and, you know, referred for public hearing. If, well, it, maybe I'll say it this way, if, if the change, I mean, if you're confident that you can describe the change with sufficient detail that we could work it in and then have the public hearing advertised, then go for it. But if you think it needs a little bit more work, then maybe you want to make your comments now and then have another chance to look at it again before you refer it for public hearing. I think we get the sense of the, I think Jenna's got the, the gist of the comment down. We could work some language in for this, but.
Okay, that'd be great. I'd hate to delay, delay the public hearing because of that.
I think we know what you're looking to do though. And as long as you're confident that we can get the wording right. And if we don't get it right at the public hearing, then we can always, you know, continue it or the, the board can continue it to work on it further or whatever is appropriate.
Okay, great. Thanks. I've, oh, sorry, Lisa, go ahead.
Can I just, before we move on from that one, is it, does it state somewhere prior to where this is listed that this is for farms only? That number? Because the way it read to me, this, I had a question on this one before this. Signs, so signs which do not exceed 20 square feet per face or 40 square feet total, and then it just includes those farms. Should it lead with on farm, farm, century farm signage?
We can add agricultural use or something along those lines.
Yeah, we, we would have to be careful in how we word it to a content neutral.
Right, right. Do you see what I'm saying though? Because if they distinguish anything, it just says a sign of that size is exempt. And that just, yeah, century farm signs.
That's true, Lisa. I remember reading that during the planning commission conversation and I wondered that myself. It's number 13 on page 18. It's just starts out like any, so if it's true that they're all exempt, that's fine. But it basically reads like any signs that don't exceed 20 square feet per face or 40 square feet total are exempt. It doesn't say ag, right?
Yeah. See what you're getting at.
So for clarification, what do we mean there? We mean, we mean farm signs or do we really mean all signs? Probably not.
And I'm sort of lost as to what we are trying to achieve. So maybe based on that, we can, yeah, we can.
I think that's just another one for Jenna to look at the wording. We're not saying that everybody in the township can have up to three signs. Or have these three types.
Right.
So the intent of this section is to allow for century farm signage, preferably if you have on frontages of streets. However, we want to designate that to allow for that option that Mr. Nettie mentioned in the beginning. And.
I don't think it has to be limited to century farm signs because I think the farm name wouldn't necessarily have to be a century farm. But it's just the, the thing they're pointing out is that this doesn't specify in this exemption that it applies to farms. I mean, it's, it's implied that you're talking about farms. But what actually says exempt or signs which do not exceed 20 square feet per face, including sexually farm signs, but might also include a sign that says Joe's diner. Or, I mean, since it doesn't specify farm specifically, it could be any property in the township, it sounds like, could make a claim that.
I think if you flip the sentences, it might work. Each farm may have a total of more than three now, signs, farm name, century, farm sign and preserve sign. Signs which do not exceed 20 square feet or 40 are allowed.
Yeah, I think you have there. Just something that makes this clear that we're only talking about farm signs here.
Right.
You could start, you could start the sentence with the word farm.
Well, like I said, I, I would just, I would just advise the board and Jenna, we, we just need to be careful about the content. And it's a little bit of a moving target. The guidance that I think was given, Gilbert decision was handed down was that if you have to read the sign to determine if the regulation applies, then it's unlawful. However, I think since that decision was handed down and the realization of just how difficult that is to enact and enforce became a little bit more apparent. I think maybe they backed off that a little bit. So I think we get the intent and we'll just have to figure out how we can still be compliant.
I think we'll just be sure that it only applies where we intended to apply. I think we'll just be sure that it only applies where we intended to apply and not every property in the township.
Thank you. I only have two more items. No, I'm sorry, three. I would like to, well, first I have a question Jenna, when you allowed for projecting signs? Um, did you allow for in all, you, you allowed for in all commercial uses that are, that have a three foot or less front yard?
Commercial and office uses with five feet, I believe it is.
My question is, will that, will that, the way I was originally going to approach that is to allow in village zoning. But you use some dimensions there to make it be just in the village, I guess. Does that, um, is that going to make sure to hit, to allow for all of those properties that are there that might want that projecting sign to be able to? Or should we designate in village zoning instead, but that, without using that X foot deep yard? I just want to make sure that all of those properties that might have some kind of office, and I don't know, I don't know what the front yards are like there.
Yeah, we can look at it closer. The idea for projecting signs is that it's along a major corridor where there's pedestrians and they would project out. I mean, I think staff internally, we sat there and thought about village districts and the businesses and offices that are in that area. So my ex was big into biking. So I was like, well, about stands, like they're not on the main drag. And they are way beyond five feet for the front yard setback on their property. But then again, they put a projecting sign out. I mean, they have it, but if you're going down back where stands is, you're going there with an intent. And so that's these typically these types of signs for the village walkable areas. They're more catered for the smaller setbacks for pedestrians. They're closer to the street and they're more at eye level to allow for pedestrians to easily read it.
Right. I totally agree with that. I just am hoping that it's not somewhat arbitrary and prohibitive. If somebody has a five and a half or a, what would it be? Yeah, it's five and a, or five and a half foot front yard that they wouldn't then be prohibited from having that kind of sign, but the way it's written, it kind of is. So.
Yeah. I mean, we can definitely.
I don't know. I guess we'll, we'll go with it as it is, but can we kind of like, can, can the zoning administrator let us know if he's running into trouble that way? Because I'd really like to be as, you know, helpful as we can for our business community.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, great, 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 great. And then, um, two more. I was looking around at some of the other center region sign ordinances. Um, and it really looks like 25 feet is the limit for wall signs, not 20 feet like we have. So Patton Harris and the State College Borough all have 25 foot limits. And so I was thinking, um, to be consistent with that, changing our wall sign, uh, height limit to 25 feet. And this is an issue that, um, that business owners do run into. The other option that I thought of that is in the model sign ordinance of the Pennsylvania Planning Association is to use the eve line for the height maximum. So I wondered if the board would be open to either of those changes that would be more, giving more allowance to business community. And if you have an opinion on what you prefer. Steve Miller?
I've got no problem with 25 feet, so.
The reason I was going to go with eve line is because it's less arbitrary, like 25 feet is somewhat arbitrary, but I don't have a huge amount of experience with this. Um, I don't really see other wall signs in other municipalities that look terrible. But they, they use that 25 feet, but. Lisa, do you have any thoughts on?
Yeah, I was going to say you could also look at what's in the T S D and T T D when comparing with the village, because those are all going to be kind of similar, um, looks and feels. So for the projecting signs and also for the height, I think, um, that could be a good, uh, good comparison model there. Um, I don't have any problem with the 25 feet. I guess the, um, the eve line maybe makes sense because it's, uh, would be consistent then.
Patty or present it. Do you guys have any thoughts on that?
No, I don't have any informed opinion on this.
Oh, I've spent a lot of time with the sign ordinance. Okay. Well, then I guess I will move that we change the height restriction on wall signs to the eve line. Any seconds?
I'll second that.
Yeah, I think this one should take a, a motion to make the change. So. So we do have motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 Motion carries.
Thanks. Then the only other item I have is with the non-conforming definition, which is at the end of the document. Um, Jen, I appreciate your work on this. Was it at the end of the document? I thought it was. Not quite at the end. My question about this definition, I looked at some other municipalities definitions and they seem to handle, oh, here it is, non-conforming signs. The bottom of page 42. So when I look at this, I think there's still some ambiguity about if a business were to change hands and they take the sign down and then they put the sign back up, but it's, it's a different sign, but they put it in the same spot and it's the same size. That is, as far as I understand, is still not allowed in this, in this way that we talk about non-conforming signs. Is that correct? That's still not allowed. Okay. So I feel like that, the reason I feel that's unnecessary restriction is because a lot of times when a business changes hands, you know, they're probably not want to go through the additional investment of changing where they hang the sign. Like there's a cost to that. Um, you know, moving the hangers and that kind of stuff. Whereas if they place it in this, like there's lights frequently looking at the sign, pointing at the sign. So I think that if we allow a business to change its sign, but not increase the non-conformity, that it's sort of more friendly to the business. And I think that Harris Township, um, if I can find it here, did a really good job of their non-conforming definition. And I was just wondering if if we could possibly look at that definition and see if we can pull something from there to, um, to make ours a little bit more friendly when a business transitions. Here I have it here. Okay, non-conforming signs, oh boy. Non-conforming signs may be repaired and maintained, which shall include, but not be limited to the replacement of certain portions of the sign or the entire sign if necessary to repair damage from collision, natural causes such as windstorm or fire and/or intentional damage such as vandalism. And I was wondering if we could use that and also add business ownership change. Because it's, it's basically stating, you know, it can be repaired, it can be changed, but the non-conformity cannot increase through that. And I was just wondering if maybe we could consider that instead. And I'm wondering why, why we are so strict with that. It seems like, you know, if the sign is there on the building, it looks at an appropriate height and that kind of thing. Why, why would we not want to allow the business owner to simply put their name in that same spot?
I think it just ties back to the board's position on these non-conforming signs, non-conforming uses and parcels. So the board just went through this whole rezoning process and the overall goal is to recognize these non-conforming lots and uses, but when they do change to bring them into conformity.
I agree with that.
On the board and how you guys would like to that.
Gotcha. Yeah, I agree with the, like when a use changes, I definitely agree that we should bring it into conformity. But I think that the building structure is a little bit different. Like if you take the Pine Grove Hall example, um, the sign is the exact same size. Same material, same look, but can't go into the same spot underneath the lights because of bringing it into conformity. So I don't know. I just saw it as a barrier. And seems like the definition is sort of not too business friendly. So. And also it's kind of no skin off of our nose, so to speak, to allow for that, but.
I, I think it seems to me the problem is when, you know, if, if you're saying something is non-conforming, so you can keep it the way it is. If you then say, but you can change this, this, and this. You know, the question comes, when do you have a new sign and when do you have, still have the non-conforming sign? And I, I I, I know that there are cases where you look at it and say, well, it's the same sign. It was just a little bit of a change, but I, I, I guess it seems to me if you, if you allow changes and call it the same thing. Sort of.
Yeah.
Mission of a pre-existing sign.
Right. We do allow maintenance. We do allow maintenance and repair of non-conforming signs and don't make them bring it into, not into conformity at that point. So I just was moving the line a little bit.
Yeah. And I'm not necessarily opposed to that. I just, I'm, I'm thinking that, you know, the purpose of allowing non-conforming is saying it's there, so you get to keep it there. You know, we have to be careful how we define too much of a change. Or we could see lots of changes to, well, it was there all along. Yeah. Lisa.
Right. Yeah, I would just go back to what it says here and I'm on page 42. I'm not sure if that's where everybody's looking, um, where it says, you know, you can do, um, incidental alterations which do not extend or intensify the non-conforming features of the sign. That can be permitted. And I think that could be a good guideline. Cause I tend to agree, uh, replacing a sign when you're still using the same, um, height, the same even setting sometimes. I know when I had a business, we just repainted the actual plate of the sign and put it right back in because it's so very expensive to change signage. So I think, I think doing something like this could really fall under that if you're not exasperating what was, or extending what was already non-conforming. So I would, I would agree with Laura and I would look at what's already stated there to guide that.
Where are you reading that Lisa? I'm so delirious right now. Sorry.
That's all right. Like I said, I'm not sure if I'm on the same page. Um, I'm on page 42, looking at non-conforming signs.
Yep.
119 dash 115 under maintenance and repair of non-conforming signs.
Yes.
So we already allow alterations.
And I like that part of the sentence and that's what the intent would be too. It's, um, so you can maintain it, you can make repairs to it, you can alter it. But if the business changes hands and you alter it, then it's not okay. And that seems ambiguous to me. I mean, as it's written now and how it's interpreted as far as I understand.
Does the word shall have anything to do with it? Because back in the beginning, when you had definitions, it's shall was something that was required.
Shall does matter. Definitely.
So Laura, did you have
Yes.
or proposed wording change or, because I'm not sure how to capture what we've been discussing.
Well, I think Lisa is going to something there with the sentence nor, normal maintenance of non-conforming signs, including copying, repairs, alterations, which do not extend or intensify the non-conforming features shall be permitted. And I'm just wondering if we could add in change of business. Change of sign that does not extend or intensify the non-conforming features.
Okay. So you're basically talking about change of the name of the sign.
Yeah, basically it's like.
Without changing the the basic, the sign itself.
Right. Not the, not the illumination, not the position, not the size, none of that, literally just like the words that are on it, but it might be a different sign, you know, probably not everybody can just paint over it. Because some are raised and.
I think that's where we're sort of running into the question is if you have to actually replace the sign with one that looks like it, that is actually physically a different thing, is that still maintain the non-conformity? At, at least that's the specific thing that brought the question. That's what happened, I think.
Right.
Yeah. So my go ahead.
Go ahead, present it.
Yeah. So my thinking is that are we, I mean, if, let's suppose we allow people to uh, just replace a sign and put in another sign. Um, which is like for like, uh, with respect to size and so on. I'm fine. I mean, it, unless we believe that we had some really egregious signs and, and we need, uh, so it's essentially a grandfather clause, uh, which is not for that particular sign, but perhaps the sign at that particular place, uh, and then we are allowing it. So that's sort of my view at this point.
So Jenna, do you think there'd be a way to word that, that just within that definition or is this something that's bigger than just a little rewording?
I took a couple of creative writing classes.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I am blessedly finished with my proposals. Um, thank you.
I think that's something you can just try to do a little bit with the wording instead of taking a motion for that one, because it's not a real big change.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else have anything on the changes to the sign ordinance? And this is again, a, would be a motion to refer to the planning commissions. Is that right? Yeah. So, so it's okay to make that motion.
Hi Laura, move that.
No, this one. Yeah, no, this is a motion to authorize for advertisement.
Thanks Steve. I would have just followed your lead. I Laura move to advertise the sign ordinance for public hearing.
Present it second.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second.
May I just clarify that the, that the motion could be to uh, authorize advertisement of the ordinance for public hearing on August 17th.
Oh, thanks Steve.
Yeah, we, we typically, we typically want to set a date for the public hearing and the motion to advertise it.
Okay. So let's set that to the motion and.
Thank you.
A further discussion. All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. And I'm going to propose we take about five minutes so I can make another pot of coffee.
Steven, I'm too afraid the coffee's going to keep you up all night. muted Steve.
Is Jenna here? No, Jenna, we need Jenna for the next item. So there's Jenna. Everyone's here. So we'll go back to the agenda. The next item is the review of the draft domestic keeping of ducks ordinance. Goes to Jenna again.
On November eighteenth, the board supervisors discussed a request from resident Pine Grove Mills to allow for domestic keeping of ducks in residential zoning districts. The consensus was to exclude the request from the adopted Saldon's zoning ordinances. And refer this to staff for the research. We have conducted that draft and presented it. That was kicked to planning commission. They reviewed this draft amendment during their July thirteenth regular meeting. They had concerns of the amendment overall due to its potential spread of viral infections. Such as the avian influenza was explicitly named. They recommended approval to the board supervisors pending outstanding comments made during the July thirteenth meeting. A memorandum dated July fifteenth included with the agenda from Christina, community planner summarizes the discussion by the planning commission.
Okay. Is there any discussion? I guess the draft is. Included in the agenda.
So I, I did not understand the. The concern about the avian flu. I mean, there, there is a. There is a chance of any type of disease with any type of animal. So was there. More specific discussion or any guidelines? See, I mean, I checked the CDC guidelines. There doesn't seem to be much. Was there any specific discussion or? Are we are just saying that, well, there might be that risk, but we'll just go ahead. I mean, but it's small, so we'll go ahead with the ordinance. So what is the, where do we stand now?
There wasn't extensive discussion on this topic. If I remember correctly, it came to the vote of planning commission and it was four one. And Rob Quest, Chris Weller. Was dissenting and he had voiced his concerns for the influenza. For his reason for not approving the amendment or forwarding the amendment. And I think overall that was a concern of planning commission. But there, that concern is still there, whether it's chickens or ducks. So we already have that now. So I think it was just an overall statement of concern for that.
I did some research after the planning commission meeting and it looks like there's not been any. Instances of avian flu transmission from bird to. Person in the United States, as far as I could tell. I think the more, more appropriate concern is probably salmonella. Which is probably pretty regularly transmitted from birds to people. But again, that's same with the chicken ordinance. I brought that up. We talked about it the first time. I thought that maybe there should be some educational materials handed out to people. That got permits. I don't know if that's happening or not, but. I don't, I don't think it's a reason. Great. That's great. I don't think it's really a reason to, to not include ducks in our chicken ordinance though.
For certain favor of this too. Yeah.
One concern the planning commission had that. Kind of concerning me as well as just. The number of ducks potentially six in a smaller backyard is slightly concerning and I maybe would move. I know the ordinance is written like a. Up to six bird animals. But I'm wondering if we can maybe put a limit on. The number of ducks that are allowed to being maybe four. So any combination of birds with no more than four max ducks. Just, just as a precaution.
We should call that the social distancing requirement.
They do typically need more space and more water, that kind of thing. They're a little bit messier. So maybe it's a good idea to maybe limit them a little bit.
Is there any guidance on the number of ducks that should live together?
There was a original research by Jeff. The, on the dangers of having chickens and ducks together. They have seen examples where one has killed the other. I don't remember which one had something to do with a male female dynamic between the two breeds. I'd have to go back and check his research on that one. But the number six came. From the research that staff had done in other municipalities and what they had allowed.
Regarding duck.
Yeah, total. Really. They've kind of combined them together.
I see this point of, you know, they're bigger, maybe require more space than what's prescribed for the coop. In there for chickens. So I would, I would be supportive of limiting it to four, if that meets the, the needs of the. Current duck owners.
Yeah. And I, I think I, I checked out, I did some search too, and they say that. You should not, it says that ducks, let me go back there. Never keep just one duck. This is cruel. Ducks are highly social. Social elements, and this means they need other ducks to live with. While it is possible to keep just one duck, it is strongly recommended that you at least have. One other duck for company while having three or four would be best. So I would be fine with four, but.
But if you get one, you have to get two.
I, I'm not putting it. That would be education. I don't want to. An ordinance.
Okay. That's what I was wondering. So thank you for that.
So I'll move that we change it to maximum of four ducks. Second, anybody?
I'll second.
Yeah. Yeah. We might as well make that actually a formal change because it is pretty big. So. Okay. So we have a motion and second to limit the number of ducks to four. Within the. Ordinance. All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Motion to amend it carries. And is there any further discussion or do we want to go with the motion to authorize advertisement?
Well, I can't find the date, so I'm afraid to make a motion, but.
So I present yet moved that the board of supervisors authorize advertisement of a public hearing. On an ordinance amending chapter twenty-seven, section seven twenty, domestic chickens for August seventeen, twenty twenty.
Second, Laura.
Okay. We have the motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next item is the under due business, the consent agenda. Now Dave, you had mentioned pulling an item off and the numbers don't all match up. So are we looking at the first item on there pulling off the?
Yes, I apologize. The numbers I set down.
So, okay. So we're going to pull item A off as a separate. Item on the agenda. The remaining items are. Three pay applications, voucher report for June and acceptance of the treasurer's report for May. Anyone want to discuss any of those off? Off the consent agenda? If not, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I Laura move to approve the consent agenda minus letter A and to accept the treasurer's report.
Present it second.
Okay. Motion and second. All in favor? Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Why do we, well, we can add that pay request at the end and just go to request for variance. We have a request for a variance of twelve seventy-eight Longfellow Lane.
Thank you. So provided with your agenda this evening is a copy of the application for the variance request. The property owner at twelve seventy-eight Longfellow Lane is requesting relief. From the restriction that of a two hundred foot agricultural land buffer. So that the property owner in this case can install a swimming pool. About approximately fifteen feet into the buffer. Property is located in the R one B zoning district and staff's recommendations, the board remain neutral on this request.
Any discussion on this one? Or a motion?
I Laura move that the board of supervisors remain neutral on the request for variance for twelve seventy-eight Longfellow Lane.
I'll second.
Okay. Have the motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? That was, that was a yes. Present it.
Yes. Yeah.
So motion carries.
Yeah. I was a little late on mute.
Yeah. Okay. The next is a public hearing on a resolution of the township of Ferguson, center of county, Pennsylvania. Authorizing the chairman and secretary to execute a winter maintenance agreement. With the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for a portion of state route thirty eighteen Whitehall Road.
Thank you. I'll ask Dave Modricar to introduce this resolution.
Yeah, the township public works department. Forms it's on a section of Whitehall Road. Between West College Avenue and Blue Course Drive. We've done this for many years. We have entered into probably for over ten years now, an agreement with PennDOT. It is a standard form that PennDOT uses with all municipalities that perform winter maintenance. For performing the winter maintenance, we're provided a monetary compensation. The township does drive down this section of road as part of. Our plow routes just moving from one section of the municipality to another. So we do traverse that section of road. So what this means is that we would put the plow blades down. Apply salt, do any anti-icing. And. The other sections of Whitehall Road. And University Drive heading, continuing heading. East to South Atherton Street are maintained by the respective municipalities. The borough and college township. So staff's recommending that we continue doing this. It is a five year. Agreement. So staff recommends adopting the resolution and approval of the agreement extension.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so I need to ask if anyone in the public wants to address the board on the matter of this agreement. Not seeing anyone. I'll ask if there's a promotion.
I Laura move the board of supervisors adopt the resolution authorizing the chairman. And secretary to execute a winter maintenance agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for a portion of state route three zero one eight Whitehall Road.
Lisa, I'll second.
Okay. Motion and second. Is there any further discussion? Saying none, this will go to a roll call though.
This is presented as resolution number twenty twenty dash twenty-one. Mr. Mitra.
Yes.
Ms. Stevens.
Yes.
Ms. Strickland.
Yes.
Ms. Denini?
You read it Laura. Or we didn't hear you.
Sorry. Yes. Sorry about that.
And Mr. Miller.
Yes. Okay. Motion carries. Next is a. Public hearing on a resolution of the township of Ferguson, center of county, Pennsylvania. Authorizing the chairman and secretary to execute a grant of easement to the university area joint authority for sanitary sewer.
Thank you. So provided with your agenda this evening is a copy of the resolution that's been advertised for the public hearing. Tonight, the resolution, if adopted, would convey a sanitary sewer easement. Sorry? Oh, glitch in my computer. Anyway, we convey sanitary sore easement. To the university area joint authority so that they could service a property located at. Two, five, six, six, Apple Green Circle. The easement would be through a portion of Greenbrier Sabre Park. And would also is being requested so that the area of disturbance. Impact on trees and other hardscaping features would be limited with the construction of the sewer line. So. There is an exhibit that's included with the agenda. That describes the easement agreement and there's also a. Appendage to that. An illustration of that area. So just to review. That where that easement area would be, this is Apple Green Circle in the Greenbrier Development. Here's the property being serviced at twenty-five sixty-six Apple Green Circle. The easement requested would, and this down here towards the bottom of your screen is Greenbrier Sabre Park. So you'd be looking. The request is to convey a permanent twenty foot sanitary sewer easement. And a ten foot temporary construction easement. The temporary construction easement, once the service lateral was installed. Would revert back to the township and would automatically disappear.
Thank you. Thank you. Um this is the public hearing, so if anyone cares to address the board, this would be the time. Seeing no indication of that, we'll go with a motion.
Hi Laura, move that the board of supervisors adopt the resolution offer authorizing the chairperson and secretary to execute a grant of easement to the university area joint authority for sanitary sewer.
Present it second.
Okay, motion and second. Is there any discussion? It appears not, so this would also be a roll call vote.
This is presented as resolution number twenty twenty dash twenty-two. Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Ms. Denini?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mitra?
Yes.
And motion carries? Okay. Uh next is a public hearing on the resolution of the township of Ferguson, Center County, Pennsylvania condemning systemic racism related to ethnicity and skin tone.
Thank you. The board has with the agenda a copy of the resolution as advertised for a public hearing this evening. Uh this draft resolution is presented for your consideration because at the regular meeting on Monday, July sixth, uh the board directed staff to prepare a, a draft resolution that would reaffirm its twenty seventeen and uh resolution and expand its commitment to equity and inclusion, as well as to condemn acts of systemic racism as uh pertaining to ethnicity and skin tone. Um because this is a, a resolution, if there are changes that the board wants to incorporate in the language, uh you may do so this evening and still take action on the resolution if you choose.
Thank you. Uh this is a public hearing, so if anyone cares to address the board on this resolution, this would be the time. Okay, seeing no indication of comments, I'll take a motion.
Yeah, I present it um move that the board of supervisors adopt the resolution condemning systemic racism related to ethnicity and skin tone.
Second, Laura.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I just wanted to say, I thought it was really well-written, and I appreciate, I'm not sure if Dave, you wrote that, or um sentries, I know she worked on the last one, so that just wanted to commend all those who worked on it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree.
Any other comments? And we have a thumbs up from Laura, so. This will also be a roll call vote, so.
This is presented as resolution number twenty twenty dash twenty-three. Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Ms. Denini?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mitra?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Yeah, motion carries. Uh next item is a request for modification or waiver for Thistlewood Lot nineteen.
I'll ask Jenna to introduce this.
Okay.
All right. Staff has received a request for modification slash waiver from Pennsara Engineering on behalf of Eric Greischer, property owner of Thistlewood Lot nineteen. The request is for relief from chapter twenty-two, five, ten dot B dot two A erosion and grading control. Twenty-two dash five, ten dot B dot, dot two B erosion and grading control and as well as B three. Um lot nineteen is an existing lot mostly sitting on slopes greater than twenty-five percent. The slope is defined as a steep slope by Ferguson Township Ordinance. Chapter twenty-two, five, ten dot B dot two erosion and grading control states that no excavation shall be made resulting in a slope steeper than a three-to-one ratio. Um B dot three erosion and grading control states that in all cases, the edge of excavation or fill shall be a minimum of five feet from the property lines of developed lots. The steep slope makes grading on the lot a challenge. Additionally, there is a conservation easement located in the northern northeastern corner of the lot where grading is prohibited. So included with the agenda is a memorandum dated June twenty-second from Christina, an ex-dean community planner for more details regarding each section of the ordinance from which relief is being requested and an exhibit detailing the lot. Planning Commission reviewed this request at their July thirteenth meeting and recommended that the board of supervisors grant the modification or erosion and grading controls as requested by the applicant. I know that I think Tony is still holding on here somewhere from Pennsara, if he would like to present the request to the board.
Uh yeah, Jen, I think you pretty much hit the high points of this thing. Um eh this is kind of typical, the Thistlewood development. Um it's at the, it's the very top of the hill there. It is a steep slope. Um so just in any way of trying to fit a house on there without having to put, you know, twenty-foot high walls surrounding the house. The house sits back up the hill to the flat spot. So of course, we have to wind the driveway up um so that it's not over the required slope for driveway. Um the, this is kind of the minimum grading you're gonna get on this lot. Again, short of that, that um twenty-foot retaining wall. There are a couple retaining walls on the site. They're not higher than four feet. Um there is some grading next to the uh the lot to the east. Um I do have a letter from those, the, the existing property owners. They have no objection to that grading. Um at one point in the past, that lot had pushed some grading onto the, the proposed lot. Um wasn't an issue at the time because this lot was undeveloped. Um but they recognized that that grading would actually uh allow the two lots to sort of um the, the uh, the look and the aesthetics will, will match a little bit better. And stormwater for the site, and, and I'm, I'm jumping ahead a little bit because there's a request for the land development plan, but I think it's important to consider. Um the, the, all of the stormwater from the site will be captured in pipes and conveyed to a basin. Um so runoff from the site should not be an issue. Um that, that's handled, and there's also a report from CMT Laboratories, they're geotechnical experts that say that, that the proposed development will not present an issue or to the proposed landowners or to any adjoining property owners. So that's it. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Uh is anyone have any questions for Jenna or Tony concerned?
Laura does.
Okay, so.
Sorry, I, I wasn't sure if you.
Okay.
Yeah. Sorry. Um I have a question. Is this one of the properties that has attached to its deed that um if it's flooded or whatever, washes away that they can't sue the township?
Yes, there is, yes, there is a whole hold harmless agreement on the plan. That's correct.
Okay, can, I'm sorry, I, I have, I don't know why I cannot wrap my mind around what this request is. I know it has to do with grading, but can you tell me what, what exists, what is allowed versus what we are allowing in terms of what I see in the land development plan? So the land development plan includes the restrictions without this modification, right?
Yes, the, the slopes are over, the existing slopes are over thirty percent, considered steep slopes. And we end up with slopes steeper than thirty percent, which per the ordinance, you're not allowed to do that. Once you've modified the ground, it's supposed to be less than a steepness of thirty percent or three-to-one slopes.
So. So go ahead.
And the ordinance also requires that any grading be a minimum of five feet distant from a property line, and we have graded very close to the one property line.
Okay. So is the relief then going to eliminate retaining walls? Is that?
It does not completely eliminate retaining walls. It greatly minimizes the use of retaining walls.
Okay. And, yeah, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Laura.
Yeah, go ahead. It's all right. I'm just have to think about it.
Yeah, I was uh, yeah, I was asking, my question maybe is to Jenna, uh and so from the township's perspectives, perspective, what are, what is our interest in? Uh you know, what, what should we check uh to see that this is right and it's fine and um it should be granted in essence? Why was, you know, there's a reason for the ordinances, and we are saying we won't we'll allow the exception, and so I wanted to uh hear from you the cons, if any.
Hmm, yeah, so I understand the intent of this section, and I know Dave Modricar could probably um go into this a little bit more. It's just to make sure that there isn't unnecessary runoff from the site if it were to be developed, if there are proper um protocols in place to not cause more destruction, um landslides for steep slope areas. The fact that this lot is at a steeper slope than what our ordinance mentions makes it a little bit different. Um and to get this lot conforming to our ordinances idea of a steep slope is a lot. So really for this being in the Saldo, if the engineering um developer can work with our township engineer to show that what they have requested and want to put in place, no, it doesn't necessarily meet the standards laid out in our ordinances. However, it won't adversely impact the neighboring properties. Make stormwater system any worse than what it is. Ideally, it will enhance, is my understanding. There will be less runoff to the property owners next door. Um so it's really just checks and balances. This is a abnormal lot. It's very steep. And it's really my understanding of it. I know Modricar maybe have a little bit more than I do.
I can add to it if you'd like, but I think summarized it well.
Also present it, from what I understand, this development would not even be legal in Ferguson Township right now because of the slope. And my question to Jenna is how many more of these lots do we have? Seriously, how many more? I mean, they're not buildable according to our ordinance ever. We're always doing this kind of thing.
Yeah. It's a hard question. I've never actually looked to see how many lots, but I, it was my understanding that not all the lots in this development were designated to go through this process. There were only a certain number of them.
Right, but I think they're the last ones on the docket because they're the hardest ones to sell, if I understand correctly.
There's also four more lots that need to go through the land development process.
And you know, I totally don't think that it's okay for people to be selling these lots when they're not like developable to, to our ordinance, but I'll I'll just, you know, leave that statement there. Um so do we think from CMT's analysis, there's not going to be an increase of runoff? There's going to be a decrease of runoff by allowing this modification? Or is that from, yeah?
I might say it in another way, Laura.
Yeah.
I believe as a result of this particular lot, it was brought to the attention of the design team by our stormwater engineer that the assumed impervious area is exceeded because of the large homes and driveways in the developments, so they do a reanalysis of the stormwater management plan to assure basins that are neighborhood-wide, there's a number of them uh in place will work, and so there's a change to one outlet structure. It's a rather minor change, but um that was looked at to assure that the overall stormwater management plan would, would still be comprehensive and work. And they've done a lot of, uh you know, right or wrong in terms of development, but there was a lot of engineering that went into this site plan to control stormwater and um help prevent erosion and problems downstream. It, it's a touchy area to develop. As, as you know, after this development, uh this type of development on, on the ridge um has been, has been protected, so it has a conservation easement to deal with, and a lot of these lots have drainage easements to deal with. Conservation easements are enforced by the homeowner association at the township. So you know, we even as of now have an outstanding stormwater complaint from residents in the neighborhood, but that withstanding done, um and modifications withstanding, they, they've done what they're supposed to in terms of the land development plan and the stormwater analysis. So I, maybe that's a long-winded way of answering, answering your question, but they did address the stormwater requirements on the lot and in the development.
Thanks. Did, and that, you said there is an outlet modification or inlet modification necessary? Is that from this development? Are they going to then do that? Is that part of their, yeah?
Yeah, I think it's uh it's included as a detail in this plan set that's in front of you.
Okay. And the, the, the conservation easement, that i- is not being touched, right? That's part of the.
I, I don't know that this development's touching it. It looks like there might be some structures in it already.
Okay.
Um Dave, just to correct one thing, Ron, Ron Seibert actually asked us to take the um the, the detail for the proposed revision to the outlet structure and put it in its own plan set. Um included in that is the actually as-bills of all the other basins in the development, so it's, it'll be in like one package. It'll be memorialized as one package. And a request from Bill Keo at the Planning Commission was then, we then had a note to sheet one that says, yes, this is being, um you know, it's tied to that other plan set that will be recorded, so.
Okay, so in essence, it's, it's getting done as part of this. It's just being recorded separately.
Yes, that's correct. And that was at the recommendation of township engineer.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I would like uh, uh another, to bring up another issue. Uh I was looking at it and I read that uh the far driving safety set of the steepest, uh steep slopes that are recommended is to go up to twenty-five percent, and this is at twenty-five percent or so. So is there a issue there or um we are concerned with or not, and this should be fine?
Or are you talking about a, a grade on a driveway?
Yes, yes.
I believe we keep that to ten percent. Um that may be at the driveway approach. So Tony, what's your maximum driveway grade?
Yeah, no, it's, it's ten percent. It's, we're not, we're not over the, we're not over the township maximum on that, Dave.
So that's why the driveway snakes up.
Right. Yes.
Yeah. Property. Yeah, just wanted to make sure that we are fine with that. Yeah. Thanks.
Yeah, the property owner will know after the first snow if he's okay with it, but it's our ordinance.
I have, um oh, I thought I had another question maybe. Well, yes, I do. So if we allow the modification, it does not, I think I asked this in the last time we allowed something like this, it does not change the deed restriction, right? It doesn't change the hold harmless clause. Right?
Correct. Yes, that's correct.
And that would include if something happened to another neighbor's property. Is that right? From this? Not that I'm expecting that to happen.
Yeah, yes, I, I believe that means that you are exempt from any responsibility for a, a failure, for lack of a better term, on this lot, whether it's, whether that failure is to their property or to a neighboring, neighboring property.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
That was my question as well. Jenna or Dave, is that your interpretation of it, the hold harmless is um also pertains to damage done to homes down slope from this? If there's a failure at this property where, where there's the hold harmless?
I believe every property owner in Thistlewood signed off on a hold harmless. So each and every one is individually holding harmless to township.
Okay, good.
But beyond, beyond that, I'm not gonna, I, I, I won't put my, I don't have one.
Okay. Well, I think that we have the professional opinions that this is not going to increase risk of others as well, so. That's the only reason I feel comfortable with this.
Yeah, I think that was really the intention when we required these uh reviews. Uh, you land development plans for individual uh houses. That really only applies to this development and it's so that it does come back in front of. Our staff to review everything before building starts. So. I always uh just turn to Dave and say, does it look okay to you? So. Yeah, they, they provided all the detail there. They've been asked to and it's been reviewed. Okay. So do we have a motion? Well, I'll make a motion. I move that the board of supervisors approved the modification as recommended in the community planners memorandum dated June 22nd, 2020.
Present it.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, that's fine.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. And now we move to the preliminary land development plan, Thistlewood Lot 19. Which I believe we've actually done a significant amount of discussion of already, but I'll turn it over to Jenna for. Introduce.
Yeah. Thank you. So provided with the agenda is a copy of the land development plan submitted by Pantera Engineering on behalf of their client, Eric Reischer. Then proposes a construction of a single home on Lot 19, so it's 183 Tops Drive. Tax parcel number 24 dash 746 dash 007 within the Thistlewood development. As per the Thistlewood subdivision plan dated September 24th, 2004. Revised March 16th, 2005, certain lots are required to complete a land development plan because of topography. Conservation easements, soil types, potential sinkhole development. And wetlands at the development location. Lot 19 is situated in an area where sinkhole development flooding and drainage problems may arise, therefore indemnity or hold harmless agreement. Must be submitted along with the plan. The parcel is 1.816 acres and is zoned. Rural residential due to severe slope on the property. A waiver request was submitted for relief from select erosion and grading controls to allow for the construction of the home. Planning commission reviewed this request at their July 13th meeting. And recommended that the board supervisors approve the preliminary land development plan for Thistlewood Lot 19. Included with the agenda is a memorandum dated July 15th from myself summarizing the proposed land development plan and outstanding comments.
Thank you. Yeah, as I say, we've discussed some of the items on this, but if there's anything else that anyone uh has questions on or. Wants to comment on.
I have something, Steve.
Hey Laura.
Um, Dave Madrick, you mentioned something about structures in the conservation easement. Is that on this slot? Is that on this lot?
I probably need to take a look at the plan sheet again. But it looked like there's a conservation easement in the corner. And I thought I saw some existing features already there. Tony, is that, is my memory correct or my?
There's a, there's a, so there's a stormwater basin in the uh, in the conservation easement. And there is a um electric line that goes through the corner of the conservation easement. It's underground, so it's allowed to go through there. So it will be, you know, the conservation easement will be returned. To its natural condition. The slopes will be the same. Everything will be the same as it is right now. And that's how they, that's what's allowed there.
So you say returned. Are you disturbing it to do this construction?
There's a, uh, put the uh electric line.
Oh, you're in, you putting them in, I see.
Yeah, the electric box is there and you can't, you have to go to the electric box. So um it goes, just cuts off the corner of it. Um, and then it will, again, it'll be returned to existing conditions.
Anything else?
Well, I'm curious about the conservation easements in Thistlewood, but it's not about this plan, so I'll hold my questions to another time.
Okay. Okay, is there anything else uh before we take a motion? Anyone care to make a motion?
I present yet move uh that the board of supervisors approved the preliminary land development plan as recommended in the planning and zoning director's memorandum. Dated July 15, 2020 for Thistlewood Lot 19.
A second. Please.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, but I do have a question.
Okay.
Actually, I thought this, doesn't this land development plan not include the modification that we just did? Correct. So should we be passing it then?
Reflected on the final land development.
Be on the final.
Oh, okay, gotcha. Thanks. Super. Thank you.
Okay, so let's take the vote again. Be sure we get them all, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item is uh board number request fire code and enforcement discussion. I don't know if Dave wants to do that or Laura or. Who's ready to?
Hey, I can do this. Hi, Dave. Um, well, it's somewhat self-explanatory. Um. There has been a little bit of confusion perhaps about what is and what is not. Allowed in terms of burning and when and how many permit, what if a permit is needed and that kind of thing. So um, I was hoping that we could get a report from the enforcement agencies. Um, and that would be code and Ferguson Township Police Department. Um, so we could understand the regulatory framework that currently exists and then consider making changes. Uh, to that, to that regula- regulation. So that's, that's the basics, just looking for a report to gain better understanding.
Okay. Uh, were there specific things like open burning or any burning or?
Yes, yes. Um, I think, I don't know if it's listed in my request, but it would be specifically about. Um, open burning, recreational fires and outdoor cook. Things, outdoor cook, cooking things. I don't know what you call them.
Smokers and.
Smokers and grills and.
Grills.
Yeah.
Barbecues.
Yeah. So those three, those three things. And so what I'd be interested in is like, um, you know, just learning. For example, when is open burning allowed? Where is it allowed? Is a permit required? Who enforces that? Um, same with outdoor cooking things and recreational fires. It seems straightforward, but because it's, it's actually not that straightforward. Um, so just hoping for some clarity. And then potentially making changes. So for example, we do have um. Leaf and brush collection throughout the township. And so one might wonder why we allow open burning of leaf and brush in residential districts when it causes like, um. You know, smoke irritation in close quarters. So just considering these kinds of things. But I'm not even sure what to propose because I'm not 100% clear on the regs.
We don't allow leaf burning, but brush you can.
That is clear to you, but maybe not to residents.
Okay.
Yeah. Any questions or?
Yes, I'm thinking, does that mean we need more education or, um, you know, in, in, in one of our?
Yeah, I think that's something that might come out of it present it. Once we get clarity, um, I'll take responsibility for not having clarity where maybe I should. But you know, once we get clarity, then we can consider if we want to do a mailing or newsletter article. Change, exchange some regulations we don't think are appropriate. Um, so any number of things like that, sure.
Okay. So I guess question and Dave, will we, do you have a clearer idea of what it is that we?
You know, chief and I can put some together and then uh reach out to the code agency and see if they have any. Uh, specific guidance that may pertain relative to the property maintenance code or the fire code that they're charged with enforcement of, like Mr. Nanny pointed out, there's. Some kind of shared jurisdiction, I guess, with enforcement of, of some of these provisions and even some things that are. You know, maybe resident in the fire code are also in some cases, um, the obligation of the police department to enforce because. There aren't code inspectors that work at night or on the weekends, whereas we're 24/7 operations. So we can put some together. It's timely. This time of year, we. Uh, commonly get questions about what is and is not regulated or permitted. We have tried and continue to. Put some information out in our publications newsletter, e-newsletter. Um, you know, we commonly feature a story about, you know, burn, open burning and what's permissive and what's not. So we can compile some of that material together in a report and then um present that to you. I'm. Can't commit to being, it being ready by August 3rd, but we can try to get something. Uh, to you and, and uh maybe the second meeting in August or first meeting in September and um give the board time to consider uh any, any further direction.
Thanks, Dave. And one question, when you were talking, it brought to mind a question I had that I sent to Walt. Um, that I'd be interested in knowing is can we, um. Can we regulate things by zoning district that he can enforce? So for example, if we decided that we did not want to issue permits for open burning in residential districts. Is that something that he could do? Or, you know, or do we have to have a blanket yes or no? Throughout the township for him to manage that, um.
Yeah.
Permit issues.
It would be necessarily quite that cut and dry. If it were a zoning ordinance provision, the obligation to enforce it would be with the zoning officer. So in that case, we may require a permit. I mean, if that were the, the direction the board were interested in going, you might require a permit process. Where property owner would obtain a zoning permit and the obligation to enforce that provision would be on the zoning administrator. I don't. Believe that that, that responsibility can be transferred to the code agency, but they do have. Um, you know, jurisdiction over the fire code and enforcement thereof. And there's some regulations that apply within that to recreational fires. So I don't know whether you could get. Um, more involved in that and split by geographic area, whether zoning district or some other. You know, line, the growth, something like that might make more sense to do so and how that might um materialize in the fire code, but. We can touch base with the code office and see what they um have done in the past and, and what may or may not be legal.
Thank you.
So did you want a motion to do this or just?
Yeah, I think if it's, um, if the direction is for staff to prepare a report, there's a recommended motion that's in the agenda. And um, you know, that would give us the, you know, the definite go ahead to start working on something.
Okay. I don't care to make a motion.
I Laura move that the board of supervisors direct staff to prepare a report on fire safety regulations from the Ferguson Township Police Department and the Center Region Code Administration.
Second.
Okay, motion in the second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Yeah, with this zoom, I can't say anybody care to make a motion and look at Laura as I say it, so we have to. Okay, uh, next is a board number request universal masking resolution.
I'll ask Ms. Strickland, since this was her requested item, if you'd like to introduce.
Thanks, Dave. Um, I thought you summed it up well in the agenda here. Um. On or around July 1st, the um state secretary of health and the governor issued an order mandating mask wearing when. Outside, if you can't maintain six feet of social distancing and indoors when you are in a place that. The general public is generally allowed to enter into, um. And I think we all know the science behind all of that, so I don't think we need to go into all that. Um, the county, center county commissioners authorized a resolution supporting that order. And I was proposing that we um ask staff to draft a similar resolution. Expressing our support of that order um as well. I think that at this point, um, with the changes, since I initially put this. Uh, um, agenda item and as a request, uh, some things have changed. You know, the cases are rising. We're getting closer to the students returning. And I think it would also be appropriate at this point to look into an ordinance that could. Uh, help us enforce this order, um, hopefully support some businesses in their desire to enforce this. Um, and you know, be a support to workers who are in these businesses and have to confront people who are. Uh, maybe not adhering to the rules. So I, I am suggesting that we discuss looking into an ordinance. I think it's. Um, a good thing to do. I know the borough is looking into it. Of course, we don't have the same situations that the borough has, but we do have plenty of businesses, restaurants and public spaces. In the township and it's, um. If we're able to do it, I think it's a good, um, again, backing to what they're doing. Um. And along with that, I think one issue that's come up is just a, a real um. Uncertainty with regard to the rules of where enforcement lies, where you should complain to, who you can complain to. And I think. Along with um the resolution and or the ordinance, I would suggest that uh the township. Help promote some education about, you know, some step-by-step guidelines as far as what we know today. You know, this is where you could lodge a complaint. This is where you're required to wear a mask. If you're a business owner. This is what you can do. I think there's not a lot of clarity and there is a lot of different hands in this, um, trying to offer some guidance and. Uh, so I think anything that we can do to help educate businesses and the public would be good. So it's kind of a triple fold request of discussion there.
Okay.
So I guess we could talk about a resolution first.
Right. Yeah, that we have the resolution. As a, an item on tonight's agenda, I think as far as an ordinance, we would have to have schedule. A discussion of that at another meeting, I think, wouldn't we, Dave? Uh.
We have that on the agenda tonight. That the board has asked to consider enacting an ordinance.
Oh, okay, within the, oh, okay. Uh, but that.
So if, if the board's interested in, in exploring an, an ordinance or something that has more teeth to it than a resolution, then. You know, that direction would be given to staff. I'm, I'm familiar at least a little bit with what State College Borough has done and has been in the process of, of looking into and enacting. Um, you know, center county adopted it by resolution, the borough is pursuing an ordinance. Um, and so. You know, I'm, I'm, I kind of know a little bit the framework of, of what might be expected, but we would have to. Um, you know, customize that a little bit to suit our needs and that would take some research and we would also. You know, the State College Borough was very concerned about enforcement. I think that concern would be doubly true for us with a smaller staff and more ground to cover. Um, understandably though, we don't have as much, um, you know, retail, commercial. Um, activity as, as you might see downtown, but. We'd have to give some more deliberate thought to that and it would take more time to put that together. So I would say depending on. Not saying it's an either or proposition, but depending on how the board was interested in going, that should be reflected in the motion. So we know how to. Go back to the, you know, and, and prepare.
Okay, so, but, but, well, I would, I guess I would like to break it up, but you know, for drafting a resolution as a motion itself. Uh, as far as an ordinance, if you, if we were wanting to pursue that, would you want a motion? To direct staff to research an ordinance or how would?
Yeah, I think that would be fine. Draft an ordinance, research an ordinance, either way, just so that, you know, we know we're moving in the right direction.
Right, okay. Because uh, yeah, I guess I have some concerns about. Because, yeah, I guess I have some concerns about an ordinance that I would need a lot more information before I'd feel comfortable moving forward with that. I don't have a problem with the resolution. I would hope that we don't do like the borough and have four pages where as is before we actually resolve something. That was.
Trash talk the borough time.
The county's resolution was long also, so I'm not sure ours.
Bro, based there's on the county resolution that had four pages of whereas, whereas, whereas for actually to a resolution, so.
Yeah, I think it can be more as pithy than that. I think we can get it down.
To two pages of whereas is.
So.
Yeah, my.
Oh, procedure.
Yeah, my thinking is that I would prefer to go the ordinance way. And also I think time is of the essence. So because like students come back in in, I don't know, four weeks or something, they can start coming back in two or three weeks from now. So that's my individual choice in this case.
If it's an either or, if we decide we don't want staff to spend the time on a resolution, if that's the concern, I would agree with Prasangit as well.
Me too.
Yeah, I would, I think the going ahead with the resolution would be fine. I don't think that would take a lot of time to prepare.
Okay.
Ask Dave.
Depends on how many whereas statements you want. Settle that. No, I I don't think I don't think it would take long to put a resolution together and there's some templates out there that other communities haven't acted.
Yeah, yeah. So I don't think it's an either or. I think we could do both and go ahead with the resolution tonight and then also doing a separate motion to have staff research an ordinance or research and prepare an ordinance, whichever. Chris.
Just to let the board know too, there are two statutes, state law that I could cite somebody for for not wearing a mask. It's something that, you know, as said throughout the state that attorneys have given us guidance to spend more time educating people than worry about citing them. So that's what we have been focused on.
Thank you. I've I saw this too. They're going around social media right now. And I guess I'll I'll add my support also for both the resolution and the ordinance and the education piece. I sent that information from the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission that really helped you understand how the accommodations are to be approached. And I think that probably there's a lot of confusion among residents and business owners about that. And I think people are scared to approach anybody who's unmasked. One, for fear of their hostility and two, for fear that they might be, you know, approaching somebody that has a disability and can't wear a mask. But it's actually really laid out in this document that it's it's okay for management to approach that person as long as they approach with the desire to make accommodations and negotiate that accommodation with that person. So I think that in terms of education, that that document is very, very helpful and that we should consider sending that to all the businesses in Ferguson Township so that we're sure that they have the accurate information in their hands. I don't know how much that would cost, but I think it would be helpful for them and for others. Dave, would that cost a lot of money to do that? To send something like that, a one page or two page document to all the business owners if we decided to go that route?
You're referring to the guidance that the Human Relations Commission issued about accommodations that are tied to, you know, I mean, I don't think it would be a it would break the bank.
You're fading.
No, I'm I'm wishy washy is what it is.
Well, would it cost much money? Would it be very?
So.
Okay.
No, I don't. I don't think so.
We have it electronically, so if that's easier, faster.
I don't know what our database, like, do we have a database of businesses? We don't have our economic development person yet. Could we go through C B I C C or whatever and ask them to distribute it?
No, the chamber is is typically only their membership. We've got data on commercial fire permits that are issued by the codes office. That's typically, those are typically for business use. And then, you know, we supplement that with home occupation data, which is, you know, sometimes not does not require a commercial fire permit. So we kind of cross reference the two and we pick up the businesses that we've missed. I'm pretty confident in that because we're just doing that now for the business needs survey that we're we're releasing hopefully this week or early next week. So you know, we have a pretty good database. We have just over 500 or so that are in the township, if my memory is serving me correctly. And we may not capture all of them, but we would certainly get a large majority.
And you most likely catch the ones that were particularly pertinent because those would be the ones that would have a fire permit, so.
The larger.
I mean, we we may, you know, it sounds like it's something the board's interested in doing. I can probably just do an insert with the business needs survey. We can talk a little bit about that and rather than doing two mailers, we just
Sure.
mall out at once.
Great idea.
Great idea.
Yeah. Okay.
The only kind I have.
Good idea.
And I think that that document Laura that you shared is not something, I think that was some general guidance. I don't think that's something that would change based on the color status we're in or something. So I think that will hold.
I agree. That was more like how you interpret that legislation for all time.
Okay, that's, yeah, I wasn't sure. Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, we have, I know, Dave, Mr. Pibalka said that, not to put things on chat, but we have a resident who made some comments. So at some point, maybe we can get the comments from him or her.
Yeah, I, if someone would like to make a comment, I would ask if they you know, come on and make the make the comment so it's recorded. And it's through a chat. So if someone did want to make a comment. I think that, you know. It looks like we may have.
Is that for me?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment about the masking resolution. And point out that there were some inconsistencies with the guidance from the governor. With the wearing a mask if you're outdoors. If you cannot maintain a six foot distance from somebody, then you should wear a mask. There's also other guidance that says someone waiting a bus stop must wear a mask. So for example, if a situation was to arise where you're sitting alone at a bus stop by yourself, do you wear a mask or do you not wear a mask? And then how would that be enforced if there was an ordinance? Just as an example of some of the inconsistencies. And how does a resolution to support the governors, how is that affected by these inconsistencies?
Did you want me to answer that?
You could press that would be good.
I can respond, I think, generally to the question, you know, so a resolution doesn't carry the force of law. So, you know, it wouldn't be, you know, a resolution would be more, you know, as the term implies resolving the board's port for for the governor's orders, it wouldn't be giving any specific direction to the Ferguson Township Police Department or ordinance officer any of our agents in terms of how we go about, you know, enforcing those provisions or providing any of those clarities or clarifications. A a ordinance, on the other hand, would inherently have more teeth to it and it would give the, as we indeed do have, as the township has, the ability to enact either more stringent regulation, be more specific about those regulations in terms of how they will apply and how they'll be enforced. So you know, if I don't, I don't know that it would necessarily get into the, you know, minutia or the detail of, you know, bus stops, so you will wear one or you won't wear one. But there could be, you know, it would be a guidance that might say if you're out in a public space and maintain a certain feat of distance, you're you're not required to wear a mask and locale, local governments are enabled by the Department of Health and the Governor's Office to verify and enact in some cases more restrictive regulations handed down from the Governor's Office. And that was, you know, kind of are made more clear, I think, in in some of the guidance that was recently issued from the office, from their office, when they said that they're not going to be phased status of counties and regions anymore. They were going to look to county and local governments to and enforce some of those regulations in all likelihood. I mean, as Chief Albright alluded to earlier, you know, we, our hope is compliance. It's not to collect fine or to issue citations. So, you know, the the what we have been doing in past practice and will continue to do is to just, you know, educate and inform and and try to get folks to do the right thing. But an ordinance would give the department the teeth if necessary to take the next step and maybe go even beyond what state statute has already laid down. So I don't know if that directly answers your question, but I think generally that's what you're, that's what you've asked.
Yeah, thank you. What would the community be able to input as far as feedback on that if it was an ordinance?
Well, an ordinance is is a public hearing, so there would be advertisement in the Center Daily Times on the township's website and we distribute information via our electronic media newsletter, electronic agendas, et cetera. So the public would be invited and afforded an opportunity to provide comments public hearing prior to the board's consideration of the ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Can I ask, for the purposes of the minutes, I just if you're willing to, can you provide your name and municipality of residence?
Sure, I'm Jennifer Moni in Ferguson Township.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any further discussion or? I think what we should do is start with a a motion on the resolution, since we know we want to move forward with that and then have a separate motion to ask staff to research an ordinance or to draft an ordinance, however we want to word it, so.
I'll make the motion. I'll move that the Board of Supervisors direct staff to draft a resolution affirming and endorsing the governor's masking and social distancing recommendations to prevent the spread of COVID-19.
Patty seconds.
Okay, a motion a second and a further discussion on the resolution. Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And want to do another one for an ordinance.
Yeah, I think I can get this wording together. I would move that the Board of Supervisors direct staff to research and draft an ordinance that can be used to enforce the order of the governors, to enforce the governor's masking and social distancing recommendations to prevent the spread of COVID-19.
Prasangit second.
Okay, have a motion a second and a further discussion on this motion. Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so you got some work there, Dave. Just in case you weren't sure what you were going to be doing the next couple of weeks. Next, we have a board members request Northland area pedestrian safety improvements. This one will go to Laura.
Well, years ago, I guess we did the Northland area mobility study because we had identified that as a problem area for vehicles, pedestrians and bicyclists. And since that time, I don't know that we've implemented a whole lot out of that study. And I don't want it to kind of like just sit on the shelf and collect dust. So I was just, you know, I regularly go to the Giant and I regularly see that the area in the aerial photograph that's behind Giant that leads to, is it called the park? Not sure if it's called the park, but the apartments behind it. That area always is a bit of a challenge for pedestrians and there are pavement markings there. And so the pavement markings are kind of worn down and so I just wondered if we could do anything about that area to make it more safe for pedestrians, although now that Penn State's not in session, there's not nearly as many pedestrians there, but hopefully there will be again soon. So I, you know, I just wondered if one, we can ask the folks to paint, repaint the markings and Dave Modricar, I think, told me that if they're on the land development plan that we can, and they are. So I guess that's that's one thing. But if you look at that area, it seems like there's a better way to connect the sidewalks there. And I have no idea what the process is to ask a private landowner to put in a sidewalk or if this area is a candidate for that because of the oddness of the, it's not a public street that's going into there, but it was at one time. You know, it's kind of a complicated little area there as you look into the previous land development plans. So I'm hoping that either Dave Modricar or Dave Pibalka or both of them can help us understand what could be done in that area aside from asking the landowners to repaint the pavement markings. Or if that might take research to find out.
Yeah, I I could start by saying I have in front of me and you may have in your your packet the projects that were recommended that came out of the Northland area mobility study. Some of them that had to do with traffic signal like the flashing yellow light or perhaps intersection lighting at Blue Course Martin. Some of those we've been able to, you know, accomplish in-house. The larger projects that have to do more with pedestrian mobility and safety. I wanted to chat with you about those during the, you know, capital budget review because we don't, I mean, staff has an idea of what we think priorities should be. The elected officials might have an idea. And as a group, we haven't said, you know, this is our priority project and, you know, fund it. I believe what we've done alternatively is somewhere in the capital plan started saving money for some type of project to offset perhaps a grant application that we may put in at a future time. So I I like you would like to see, you know, something get started. I think we just got to decide what that something is. But then in terms of pedestrian movements on the private property that was within the mobility study, I don't think we spent a lot of time on the internal circulation. It was more once they got to the public right away and how buses and bikes and cars and walkers, you know, moved around in that space. So I believe, I mean, I I think the easy box is requiring the developer to paint the lines that are shown as sidewalks on their land development plan that presumably we allowed them to paint asphalt instead of install concrete, which would have made it, you know, more obvious. But beyond that, other than, you know, entering into a discussion with a property owner and just having a talk with them to see what they might be getting input from. Yeah, I don't have anything else prepared. Like you said, it might take a little bit of looking into to go beyond that.
It seems like such a mishmash there, like you have the sidewalk from RE/MAX coming straight out into the parking lot with no crosswalk on it. It seems like such a mishmash there. Like you have the sidewalk from RE/MAX coming straight out into the parking lot with no crosswalk on it. It's not like connected with the bus area where there is no, also no crosswalk now, even though there's like a, one of those ADA ramps down onto the asphalt. It's, it seems like, I'm confused about the original land development plan, why the sidewalk didn't go. I don't know how to describe it. In the grassy area between RE/MAX and the road that leads into Giant. Like there's an area there that it looks like it would connect you know, the RE/MAX sidewalk and then go straight across the road right there at an appropriate place. I think I also noticed on the land development plan, there's supposed to be a stop sign there at the bus stop. But there's not one. And then I guess my other question is, you know, the stop is painted on the pavement. But there's places where you could put a stop sign. So I'm wondering, why not ask them to put a stop sign there as opposed to painting it on the pavement? I guess it just seems like it could be much better designed with a real sidewalk through that grassy area. But is there, is there a reason why we didn't do that or?
I don't have a recollection of that.
I guess I don't understand what you're saying, Laura, because there, the sidewalk from the buses that goes down to Blue Course Drive takes you right by the it's, it's right there. I don't see it as a problem. And maybe because was that a private house before and not a commercial property?
I'm not sure, but the, it's not, it's the area that connects with Martin, not Blue Course. It's the backs, the backside. I'm sorry, it's kind of, I can't point to documents and it's a little bit difficult, but.
Was that they did the repaving and I, I don't know if there were lines there before or not. Now there's new pavement. It's definitely not lined for a walkway. This would be coming up from the apartments on Martin up to Giant, basically.
Yeah, the pictures I took in are included in the agenda and it shows there, there are lines, but they're like, a lot of them are just faded out. But I guess my question is do we really want to ask the landowner to repaint the lines or do we want to look at like a better pedestrian movement through there and see if we can do that? And I don't know the answer to that because I don't, I don't know if it's private property. Like I think we can ask a landowner to put a sidewalk in when it's adjacent to a street anytime. But I don't know if that's even a street on that side, even though in the old land development plans, it used to be a public street.
Share my screen real quick?
Yeah.
Okay. If I can do it here. All right, that didn't work out so well. Are you looking at the map?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that?
Right. So see that?
This area.
Right. So like instead of the sidewalk going across and then down through the grass and hitting the other sidewalk, it shoots people out into the parking lot. And I just, I don't understand why that would be the case.
Well, it's cheaper.
Well, okay. That's true.
And the other thing is, is I don't know, where would you propose that it goes?
Right, if Chris, if Chief can put that down a little bit. You would think it could go, right? So like kind of cut through the existing sidewalk that's crossways, the sidewalk would go up, cut across it and then go to the bus stop and then across the street there where the stop sign was supposed to be. Yes, and then keep going further to the little blue bus stop thing. Keep going. Yeah, and then across the street there. And that's where the bus ramp goes down, but there's no, there's no painting there. And Steve, maybe there was there before. I'm not sure if that was what you were meaning.
Yeah, that's what I was meaning is I don't know if there was there before or not, but definitely isn't now, so.
That site right there has been the site of many sinkholes, correct, Dave?
Yes, that's correct.
Absolutely.
Oh, you mean that's why they repaved it?
Yes.
Got you. Got you. Well, I'm not really married to this idea. It just seems like when I was looking at it and thinking about repainting it, I thought, why? Why is it even sending pedestrians out into the street to begin with? And then I wondered if, you know, if we can ask the landover, landowner to put a sidewalk in there, why wouldn't we? But I don't know that we can.
Well, I don't think we can require them to. So we can ask them to do anything, right? So we could ask them. The, the requirement part, as you had mentioned earlier, is, is when the property abuts a public right of way and the board ordains, you know, a sidewalk installed interadjacent to the public right of way. So in this case, we're looking at all internal circulation on a, on an approved land development plan.
Okay. Well, then I guess my motion is to ask the landowner to repaint the painting, the paintings, that land or the pavement markings and also to install the stop sign where it was indicated on the land development plan up by that bus stop. If, if I'm remembering correctly.
So as far as doing something that complies with land development plan, I would we even need a motion for that or is that just approach them and say this should be here?
Yeah, I think staff can just follow up on that. I, I know the, the gentleman that, that does all the maintenance work for that site. And so I'll probably start with him. And if he says, Dave, we're just going to take care of it, then that's easy. And if I need to go beyond that, I'll talk to Jen or Dave and see who we want to contact, kind of working our way up to the ultimate property owner.
Yeah, I, I think it would be worth somebody talking to them and saying, you know, would you consider putting a sidewalk there? Because there is an awful lot of pedestrian traffic through there. And I think, yeah, it'd be worth at least asking them because it's their customers are walking back and forth on there, so.
Okay.
The safety issue, I think they should at least consider it.
Thanks, Steve.
Year ago, Dave, Dave Palmer was doing all the maintenance on that site.
Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, we have some contacts. You know, they recently did some work on the rear with the swale and some stormwater work also on the, on the Martin Street side.
Yeah, so I guess we, we don't really need a motion then for this. This is something you just do through.
Okay, if I actually made one, I retract it then.
Yeah, no, we didn't have one, so. Sure, we didn't need one. Okay. So then we move on to staff and committee reports. Starting with the Ad-Hoc Facilities Committee.
Thank you, Steve. I attended the Ad-Hoc Facilities Committee meeting this month. We met at Millbrook Marsh and had a tour. I thought one thing that was interesting about the tour, something that I learned that I did not realize before about the proposed updates to the facility was that when that is completed, they'll be able to utilize the currently existing building better because the children that are in there, they're loud and the, the noise kind of goes up into the open area into the second floor. And so they'll be moved into a different area. So that building would be open for classes that are more quiet and that kind of thing. So that, that was interesting to me. I thought it was be a valuable expansion. We reviewed the draft of the committee vision and mission statements. And Mr. Frannick of the Code Code Administration led that and he did a very good job. We'll be reviewing them again at the next meeting, Patty, so you should look forward to that. Oh, they talked about the, one of the goals of the facilities committee is to review, to assess each of the COG facilities and then make a plan of how to do improvements and maintenance from there. And so I think we've only done like two or something like that. We have about 20 to do. So I asked what the timeline was for that. So they think less than two years. But they're looking about that, that length of time to do this original assessment of each of the facilities. And I did ask the COG committees generally and the facilities chair that if possible, could they provide a, a remote option to attend the meetings? They, Rich Frank said, you know, he thought it was very valuable to do the tour, as did I. But I think that to be able to include as many people as possible, that we should try to have remote options. So they're considering that. That's it.
Okay, thank you. I had the finance committee met. Mostly we received the program plan or reviewed it and then everybody will be receiving the COG program plan for 2021 at the next general forum meeting. We didn't really get into the budget aspects of it yet, but that'll be starting next month. The we just discussed a little more about refinancing the pool and parks loan as a combined thing. There may be a chance to save a significant amount of money by refinancing those. What we did before was just sort of change the terms. But because the pool loan has a higher interest rate, it may be some real advantage to refinancing. And I think at the next meeting, we'll probably ask Chris Gevins to look into that. You know, get some hard numbers. Whether either a new loan or a bond would be a better option and whether those would save money in the long term. So that, that would be looking at. Got an update on the fund balances, which actually are still in pretty good shape for this year. There've been some extra expenses, but there've also been things where money wasn't expended that would have been. So right now, I think the the funds are looking in pretty good shape for the year. Who knows what happens in the second half of the year with the as things continue. And then we got an, an update on the FEMA reimbursement. We've applied for quite a, quite a few things to be reimbursed. And that is going to take a while to know exactly what's going to be covered, but a lot of the, a lot of the expenses may be coming in. The library did get the PPP loan, which will cover a lot of staff costs, and that is the forgivable loan. So it essentially works into a federal grant, which will help a lot with the library budget, so. And we'll be getting into the regular budget pretty soon, so. That was about it for the finance committee. We have joint Parks Capital CR, ERA meeting.
Thanks, Steve. So we actually had a reorganizational meeting. Or we, we did our reorganization because at our first reorganizational meeting in January, there was a tie for chair. And so we re, revoted and I was elected chair and Anita Tees was elected vice chair from Patton Township. We had the Park and Rec Regional Comprehensive Study update, which you heard from Bill earlier that there'll be some upcoming work session meetings. And we decided that it would be good to extend the invitation to the COG Parks Capital Committee and the Original Park Comprehensive Plan Committee to attend those meetings. And so that invitation was extended. We had a Whitehall Road Regional Park update and Billy just confirmed that it's still very over budget and it looks like some sort of additional cuts are going to have to happen. And as you heard from Bill, it sounds like that's going to be the topic of work session number two, July 28th. The Mount, or Millbrook Marsh Nature Center Spring Creek Education Building Phase Two update. Basically really still looking for grants to help fund that project and maybe reaching out to Penn State to see, even though they're also in crisis right now, if there's any support that they can offer and to get that job done. Really, that's it. Thanks. No questions?
Okay. Okay, the, well, the agenda for the MPO Technical Committee is attached to the you, you already reported, you haven't had a meeting since the last report, Lisa, have you? You're on mute.
Hit a button, sorry. I'm not sure I've reported on the last meeting, but the only action that was taken was the tip. The 2024 tip was adopted. And I do know I spoke with Ron Seibert about the technical committee meeting that they had and he just confirmed that that the other Route 2645 intersection signaling and realignment is still on the LRTP, which is great that it's still on there. There wasn't a discussion at that meeting about taking the signal out of that. So that's still a discussion that needs to happen. We've been talking about it offline, sent an email just to try to figure out if we were all on the same page. So I think, I think we are now and yeah, so it's still on the LRTP, which is a good thing.
Good.
It's nice to see, speaking for staff, coordination between the coordinating committee rep and the tech committee rep again. For a little time, so appreciate you bringing that back to life.
Oh, good. It's helpful for me, that's for sure.
Good. Okay. Next, the Spring Creek Watershed Commission.
Yeah. Right. So I actually couldn't attend the meeting because of a family issue. But I sort of watched the first half through CNET before I had to go in and attend things. So the first half was, out of the one hour was we had, there was a presentation from the Arboretum folks. At, and they have a person who works at Penn State now who came in and talked about the Arboretum. It's, I think, seven acres out of 370 is the garden, but there is this other wooded lands that can be explored. They asked for activities and partnerships that they could do with the township. And if we have any ideas to go and contact them. He said that right now they are active, actually started some quote unquote, activities virtually where people are coming, experts usually Penn State are coming in and giving talks about some interesting aspect that we don't normally think about and so on. So they have this virtual set of programs going on. And so that's was some information and then a call to participate with them. And they want to add many more programs as and when things open. Then the rest of the meeting was the, the major things where there was this, the status of the One Water Report. That's on, on schedule, they'll release it and and then they asked us, they asked people to, if you have stories related to water to send it to me or send it to Joanne Testabelli, who is the chair. And they will sort of publicize it. And then there was some discussion with respect to the climate action plans. But I wasn't there at that time, so I'll follow up those things and possibly add to my report in the next time.
Thank you. Next, we have manager's report.
Thank you. My report's in the package, just to Thank you. Uh, my report's in the package. Just a couple of items I'll touch on verbally. Uh, we, uh, closed on an acquisition of an ag conservation easement on the McWilliams farm. That's just off of Shingle Town Road. Uh, exactly 100 acres was, uh, brought into the ag conservation easement program. Township share of that was $15,000, uh, exactly. That's $150 per acre times 100 acres. And in exchange, uh, for that consideration, we are part owners of that easement. We're the minority owners of it. The county and the Commonwealth are the majority, uh, have the majority of the easement, but we have a piece of that as well. So, um, more ag land preserved in Ferguson Township, good news there. We had our coffee and conversation event on July 10th. It was sort of sparsely attended, but appreciate everyone who joined, uh, the discussion for that and certainly appreciate, um, state representatives Benninghoff and Irving and Matt Long from Senator Corman's office and Congressman Fred Keller, who participated in that discussion as well. Very recently, we had a meeting with county planning staff and their consultant HRG, uh, in the Conservation District to talk about their development of a countywide action plan with the intent of reducing nitrogen and phosphorus discharge into the county's watersheds. Center County is a tier two county under the PA Department of Environmental Protection and Chesapeake Bay Phase Three Watershed Implementation Plan. So right now they're working on their Phase Three WIP, WIP. They're really just, uh, kind of fact finding at this point, learning what the, they were particularly interested in the township's consideration of a stormwater impact fee and how they may be able to partner with the township to leverage some of those dollars as match. And they could in turn invest back into municipal projects. So that's a short way of describing a pretty long and complicated and yet to be defined process. Um, but suffice it to say that with their Phase Three WIP, there may be opportunities for the township and the county in the future, albeit, you know, maybe distant future, to partner in some of these improvement projects that would meet our MS4 obligations, our nitrogen and sediment, uh, reduction requirements to the Chesapeake, uh, and also help the county meet some of their commitments under their countywide action plan. Uh, and then just lastly, as I alluded to earlier, the business needs survey, uh, we prepared sent Tris Martin and I, it's in draft format, but we're finalizing it now. We hope to, uh, distribute that this week. We'll add in some of the, um, maybe guidance that we can put together relative to the Human Relations Commission's, uh, document or enforcement of the governor's order, uh, with that based on tonight's discussion. And, um, as I said, hopefully we'll get that out this week and we'll have some results in the, in the near future to report back to the board. I can answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Dave? Okay, thanks, Dave. And we'll go to the Public Works Director's report.
Thank you, Steve. Of note, the road crew is paving sections of grit path in Tudic Park. So when you get a chance, you can stop out and take a look at some of that work. Tree Commission meets August 17th at 5:30. Discussion topics will include review of the draft tree preservation ordinance, the heritage tree resolution and tree planting list. Final meeting of the Stormwater Advisory Committee is scheduled for July, I'm sorry, it, well, it is scheduled for July 29th. The July 15th meeting was postponed. Uh, with the reason it was postponed was to allow staff to make, uh, corrections to impervious coverage determinations in the, uh, GIS system as we assigned impervious areas. That was necessary, kind of a quality control step to allow the consultant to more accurately determine, uh, proposed rate structure. So after the Stormwater Advisory Committee meets, and again, that meeting is on, uh, July 29th at noon, the consultant will then be able to prepare the final report, work with the manager, schedule a time to present that final report of the study to the Board of Supervisors at a future public meeting and then start talking about, um, next steps. Staff has started working on the preliminary design and evaluating different options feasibility of different ideas for the Pine Grove Mills Streetlight Conversion. Once again, the idea there is the 25 lights on Pine Grove Road and the 10 right lights on Nixon to, uh, be able to work on those because we do not have, uh, electric cutoffs to allow us to troubleshoot, perform maintenance and also upgrade the fixtures with LED style fixtures. So I will report to the board as progress on that continues. Most of our paving projects are substantially complete. I have a few notes about the various projects in my report. And, um, you're anxiously awaiting micro-surfacing in Ferguson Township, I know. So that's planned to start, uh, the 27th. And that's all I have to report.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Laura.
Thank you. Dave Modricar, did you work out what color light the light was going to be for the Pine Grove Mills Light Project?
Yes and no. I've had a lot of discussion with the consultant. I think it is a, um, 4,000 on the Kelvin scale, a, a corn cob retrofit. I think the way to do it is probably to just install one and let you see what it looks like again. We, you know, we tried that with two. The, one of the difficulties we have on, on this project is if we want to replace the entire luminaire, that large ornamental top piece on the post, it might be, I'm just going to use a number of $2,000 and to replace just an LED bulb and retrofit it and pull out the existing ballast, maybe $200. So there's a difference of about a factor of 10. And there's 35 of these lights. So it, you know, it is, it's, it is a, a budget concern. The other concern is that the poles are only 10 feet in height, not 12 foot or 14 that you might see elsewhere or in other parts of the township. So the lower those lights are to the sidewalk, the greater the perceived, you know, glare is. And so, you know, those are some of the issues we're trying to work through. On Old Gatesburg Road, you know, we, there's a number of different places where we have LED fixtures. The last one we put in would be the pole at the corner of Coral Street. At Coral and West College, we have an ornamental style, um, LED light there. So I, ideally the thought was we'll just replicate those. They seem to have worked elsewhere. We don't get complaints. Um, you might like them better, but it's also 10 times more expensive. And these posts are 10 foot high instead of 12 foot. So I can't really just take one from another location replicated thinking that, you would like the appearance because it's closer to the ground. So one of my thoughts, um, as I talked to, you know, one of our, um, design consultants and electrician that I've been consulting with on this project is this, again, a corn cob style LED retrofit. The other thing I think that happens is if, when I put one out there, all the rest of them on the street have a different color, it's going to stand out more than if they were all the same also.
Right.
So, you know, more, more to come on that. But
Okay.
The ones that we have in place are 4,000 Kelvin. So it's, you know, it's definitely brighter than the yellow, high pressure sodium. I don't think it's going to be hard to find an LED that hat, doesn't have a whiter, crisper, cleaner light. You know, we're going to stay away from the blue spectrum, those kind of obnoxious blue colors that, you know, you might see in some car headlights that are heading down the road. So we're going to try to keep it as, as cool as, as cool as we can, but still be an LED. So I don't, I don't think it's going to be, but wow.
So, okay, so I'm, so I'm concerned because there's definitely a concern in Pine Grove Mills. They want the streetlights, but they don't want them too bright. Um, I'm wondering, I don't want to, I, I would hate to see us make an investment in like this that everybody hated. Um, so is it, is it possible to install just one or is, does that not make sense cost wise? Do you normally buy 40?
No, 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 there, there's, there's kind of two components of it. One is the light, the way the light looks, and that's what we're talking about right now. And I can get one and I can put one in and we can look at it. Yes. The, the other component of it is the ability for us to maintain and work on the lights because we, we can't every time we like this, we have to call an electrician, they have to work on it hot.
Right.
Because we don't have any way to cut the power off. Unfortunately, when, when the system was installed, there's 16 separate electric feeds coming from backlot utility poles in an effort to save money. And, you know, there's a community group involved. It was kind of a first lighting project. Wouldn't do it that way, knowing what we know now. So one of the things we want to try to accomplish with this project is to get disconnects so that we can shut off the power. And we want to try to limit the number of disconnects. So that means interconnecting more lights, which means underground conduit, which means a PENDOT permit. So, you know, just replacing the LED bulb is actually kind of the easy part of this project. And we can certainly just put in one corn cob light and see what the board thinks.
I think that'd be great. And I'd love to get the small area plan folks input on that before we make the purchase.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I did have one comment, Dave, uh, doesn't have anything to do with your department, but you've gotten the question a number of times. I drove across Atherton Street to Cherry Lane yesterday and did not scrape the bottom of my car. So.
Ah, very good. I, I, um, I've been on the peripheries of that. So did they, they did repave it, Steve?
Yes, they, they've got, got a grade that does not scrape on the bottom now. So.
Very good. Good to hear.
Yep. So, okay. Uh, next we have Planning and Zoning Director's report.
My report's included in the agenda packet. Um, I do want to highlight, uh, the one part of it. We've gotten a lot of application requests for the COVID-19, uh, flexible business support resolution that was passed recently. And we're receiving really good feedback from businesses in the township that are very grateful for that.
Good. Then we have the Chief of Police.
Thank you. My report is for the month of June. Overall, our, uh, minor crimes are up a little bit. Our significant crimes are also up a little bit. And overall, our crimes are down. Incidents of note, um, we had a, officers responded to a restaurant for a choking woman. The officers took over care of that woman when they arrived. She went unconscious. They administered CPR and revived her. She wrote a very nice letter to the officers in the department. We had a gentleman that, uh, was charged with aggravated cruelty to animals. He threw a cat against the wall, uh, broke two of the legs. One of the legs had to be amputated. And as I said, he's been charged for that. In May, we were, we received a site evaluation for our accreditation status. And we received official notice in June that we passed that onsite. Evaluation and our formal acceptance will be August 4th of this year. Detectives were pretty busy for the month. Uh, there was a discharged shotgun into a parked car in Overlook Heights. That is still under investigation. We have a couple of leads, so hopefully we'll be able to make an arrest on that one. Also in my report, I have included a use of force summary for both the month of June and also for the year. We tracked 15 categories of use of force, general use of force category, all the way up to a discharge of a firearm. So you'll see for the month of June, we have three use of force incidents and that's handcuffing and, um, hands on. And then on the following page, as I said, you'll see the report for the remainder of the year. And that's all I have. So if anybody has any questions.
Hey, congratulations on that, um, pursuit.
Oh, yeah. Quite a mess, huh?
Yeah. Yikes.
So. Okay, next we have, are there any communications to the board that did we mention? Doesn't look like it. So the calendar items refer to our next get together, which is tomorrow at six o'clock. And Wednesday.
Yay.
So since we're going to be getting back together fairly soon, I'll take a motion to adjourn this one.
So moved.
We're adjourned.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Night, everyone.